I'd like to call this February 7th meeting of the City Council together. And let's start with a pledge of allegiance, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unencouraged, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Susie, if you'd give us a sense of who's here.
Present for the record are Mayor Fortier, Council members Cole, Davis, and Grego. Absent is Councilmember Swanson. Good morning and welcome to the regular City Council meeting of Tuesday, February 7th. Before we proceed, as a courtesy to others and to limit interference with our audio and video broadcast equipment, please silence or turn off all cell phones, pagers, and any other type of communication devices. If you are in need of an assisted listening device, please make a request to the city clerk. We encourage and welcome public participation. If you wish to speak on an item listed on the agenda, please complete one of the yellow speaker comment forms which are located in the back of the council chambers on the small podium. Please indicate the item that you wish to speak on and provide it to the city clerk or assistant city clerk Ellen Palazzo prior to the item being heard. Public communication items are limited to three minutes, and this is the time for members of the public to address the City Council on items not listed on the agenda. Please note, however, in accordance with the Brown Act, the City Council cannot deliberate or vote on any matter raised under public communications. Comments for all other scheduled agenda items are limited to five minutes. The city clerk will use the meeting timer, which will be posted on the whiteboard to the left of the podium. When you are called upon to speak, please come forward to the podium, state your name clearly for the record, and we respectfully ask that you keep your comments concise and once the timer ends to please be seated. The City Council asks that respect be shown to the council, city staff, and members of the audience, and ask that you please refrain from clapping, booing, or shouts of approval or disagreement during the meeting. Thank you.
Okay, and we'd like to take a moment to recognize some of our firefighters. If we could have, please Chief Euler.
I was just going to take a moment to read a brief statement that describes what our firefighters did down in Reno at the recent disaster down there. On the afternoon of January 19th, the South Lake Tahoe Fire Department responded with a brush engine as part of the Tahoe Basin Chiefs Strike Team consisting of five Type III brush engines. Four personnel were assigned: Fire Captain Carl Kepin, Acting Engineer and Paramedic Doug Bailey, firefighter/paramedic Mike Fuller, and firefighter Tom Cunningham. Upon their arrival to the fire area, they were placed into the initial attack area in the residential area of Galena with the fire rapidly approaching, where 1,500 residents were being evacuated at the time. With the efforts of the firefighters, including the members of the South Lake Tahoe Fire Department, Brush One helped spare over 800 homes in the Galena area. At approximately midnight that night, they, along with other strike team members, were reassigned to the Washoe City area in the area of the origin of the fire. Brush One continued to work throughout the night, putting out spot fires and extinguishing homes and putting out fires in outbuildings, helping to minimize property loss and damage. At 7:30 in the morning the following day, Carl Kepin attended a briefing, and they were notified that they were to be demobilized at 10:00 a.m. that next morning. Overall, the Washoe Fire Drive consumed over 3,100 acres and 26 homes and outbuildings. But thanks to the efforts of the fire and law enforcement people, including the crew of the South Lake Tahoe Fire Department, over 800 homes were saved. Thank you.
Well, please thank your men for us. That was quite a fire. If you've driven past it, it really was a lot of acreage, and it was quite a mess. Thank you. Moving on along, I am opening the next portion up to public comment. Anyone who'd like to publicly comment on something that we do not have on the agenda today, please come up to the podium.
I forgot to fill out a paper. Hi, my name's Ken Kurtzweiler. I just wanted to comment on, recently you had a gentleman have a nuisance ordinance up on Pioneer Trail, and the city hired a contractor to go in and clean up that area. Whether it needed to be cleaned up or not, you know, that's the moot point. But what I just want to suggest today is that when you hire a contractor to do a cleanup, I would like to see the city hire an actual licensed contractor to do the work for the city, or put it out to bid to have a licensed contractor do the job. It is my understanding that the gentleman who did the job portrayed himself as a licensed contractor. He does not hold a license. He has people working for him; he does not hold workman's comp. I hold a C-61, D-63 construction cleanup license. I have $2 million liability insurance to protect anyone that I work for. I have $750,000 truck insurance and property damage insurance to protect anyone that I work for. I have employees that live here in the city and spend their money and taxes in the city. I would like a chance to get the jobs that the city subs out to and go out to bid. I'm not asking for the city to give them to me; I'm asking for a chance to get the job, but I'm also asking for the city to hire licensed contractors who you can 10-99 at the end of the year, because you cannot 10-99 an unlicensed contractor, so the $2,500 that you spent is going to be eaten. So you cannot write that off. And I would just like to see the city use licensed local contractors in any venture that they do. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other member of the public who'd wish to speak? Seeing none, I'm going to turn it over to council and ask for city commission reports. Is there any members of any city commissions who wish to speak? Councilmember assignments. Bruce?
I did attend the LAFCO meeting last month, but I also attended more recently the next subcommittee, the next subcommittee meeting that we had on 271 from the Nevada delegation. Had an opportunity to speak, but most importantly, they are anxiously awaiting California to start engaging them to discuss the issues regarding TRPA and the direction that Nevada wishes to take with TRPA. So that's kind of where it stands. That's all. Thank you.
I'll start at the other end and come on back to me, because I have a couple of things. Anything? Tom?
Yeah, I was asked by the sheriff to attend on behalf of the city. I was asked by the sheriff of Villarreal County to attend a meeting this last Friday on behalf of the city. It's called Coordinations Conflict Resolution Regarding Federal Agencies. I'm not quite sure what it means yet. Is it another layer of bureaucracy? I'm just sorting through all the information. I'll get it out to the city council. We'll get a presentation made by the county. It has to be sanctioned by the county, and this was a second meeting to have the county sanctioned. Basically, it's conflict resolution on federal lands such as BLM and Forest Service. Really involves the West Slope more than us. For example, there were folks there from the timber industry, from farming, ranching, cattle ranching, but we also surrounded here by Forest Service land. And I had asked a question about TRPA since they claim to be a federal agency, and the answer was yes. So I'm not quite sure how this applies yet. Like I said, I'm just reading through all the documents I've got. I went down this last Friday, and I'll get it to the council, and we'll discuss it in a future meeting. But it's interesting. That's all I got.
Then I'd like to report on what I've been up to. First of all, there was a new mayor's meeting that was held in Sacramento from the 18th to the 20th, and I learned that the gavel cannot be used on either nails or other council members' heads. So that was completely disappointing.
Would that be wood, too? Considered wood?
Yeah. So that was the information that I derived from there. I'd like to let you know we are going to have an update on the regional plan, TRPA's regional plan, but that between Hillary and I, we're putting in something like 40 hours every two weeks on the various regional plan update committees. TRPA also met, they were presented with the Regional Transportation Plan and also a presentation on TMDLs. And we are going to talk about TMDLs a little later in what is our strategy, and I think then we also have closed session on what is our approach. Speaking of TMDLs, I met with Supervisor Jennifer Montgomery from Placer and Supervisor Norma Santiago regarding the three jurisdictions approach to TMDLs. Our staff has, at this point, created a permit that has been redlined and gone through, and we are looking at meeting with La Houghton to go through this redline permit, hopefully the 16th after we get direction within the closed section, session. The overarching feeling was that we needed to stay together as a group and approach this as a group, and look at how we can make overtures to La Houghton to come up with a permit that is affordable and workable. Finally, I wanted to let you know that I was one of three governing board members that was called before the Nevada Oversight Committee to speak at their meeting, as Bruce was there as well, and I felt as if both Bruce and I emphasized the need to have real local control over some of the planning and implementation policies in the regional plan. So, and then the last thing I need to report, and I will just give a brief, is that addressed to me as the mayor and sent to all members of the city council was a letter from the TRPA regarding the appointment, the city council's appointment of Bruce Grego as a layperson to the TRPA Advisory Planning Commission. And essentially, the letter says, which is here for anyone to read, that the TRPA governing vote, the TRPA governing board are the ones that vote on APC members, and they are currently discussing that, and that inconsistent with past policies, the TRPA considers elected officials ineligible to serve as laymembers, and goes on to point out why. The bottom line is that the TRPA maintains that this is a governing board prerogative. And that's my report. Moving right along to our consent agenda. Bottom line is, is there any member of the public that wishes to pull something from our consent agenda? All right. Any members of council? Bruce?
Mayor, before we go any further, I'd like to continue one item. I'd like to continue item number six, dealing with the Cal Tahoe. We're still discussing with Parsac the insurance requirements, so I'd like to continue two weeks to make sure we have those in line.
Okay.
I said eight.
Number eight. Okay. Tom?
Pull five and comment on seven.
Five and comment on seven. Hal?
Nothing.
And I'd like to pull seven. So, moving along, do we have a motion on item, first of all, a motion on the minutes? Items two, three, four? Two, three, four?
I move to approve the consent agenda with the exceptions that the items are going to be pulled.
Seconded.
Tom?
That motion carries by all present.
Okay, moving on to item five, and that was something that you had pulled, is that right?
No, I did.
Tom? I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I'm not opposed to the, to the motion. The recommendation is here. I guess my question is more of a global question, and we've had this discussion before. I am not at a comfort level yet on the COPs, how we're going to pay for it and how we're going to finance it. I know we're going to move forward with it, and Tony and I have had this discussion, but I really got to get to a comfort level before we go borrow 10 million, how we're going to pay it. You do the same thing in your household, and we can't do it on the come line. We need to have dedicated source of revenue, and it's a little more complex now that we're going to have this presentation at 1:30 about the $46 million shortfall. So I really need, and Tony's trying to get me there, but I'm not there yet, so that's my concern. I just want to voice it. Again, we need to move forward with the process, and I don't have a, I did learn a new term, validation action. Never heard of that before. So that's my concern with this. I want to move it forward, but I just want to keep raising that flag that staff needs to keep working on a dedicated source, and we're going to talk about the business license act and under new business, but that's my concern.
Tom, that's valid. We've got you close to the goal lines. I'll have Christine push you over right now.
Should I just step like they did in Super Bowl and fall over?
Sit down.
Your instinct kicks in.
Good morning, Mayor and council. Yeah, it's a very good question, and we're very aware that we cannot borrow money without a dedicated revenue source, and that's something that your finance team is working on. However, to start the process, we do need all the team members, so we did go out for RFP to select a new bond counsel, and there won't be any costs incurred, because bond counsel is only compensated if and when bonds are issued and from those proceeds, so.
Yeah, it's, and I want to move forward with this. You know, we've been talking about it for years. Now's the time for action. But again, I'm just concerned about that dedicated source that we have to pay it back, so.
And that answered my question, which is whether we don't pay unless we actually decide to.
Yeah, in the five-year plan, we could issue up 10 million and cover that with existing expenses, just that beyond that, we've proposed that in year 2013, we go to the voters for a measure on a TOT increase of approximately 2%. And if that would be successful, which we believe based on polling data would be, that would serve as the additional revenue stream for future bond proceeds to expand our capital improvements program.
I understand that.
Yep. Just to be clear, the only thing we would pay would be the $2,500 out-of-pocket potentially. We would not pay their fees. So potentially, we could have to pay $2,500 if they incur out-of-pocket costs.
Simply for engaging them in the, even if we...
If we engage them for a couple of months, they have copying charges, phone charges, things like that, actual out-of-pocket costs that they have, not fees or attorney's times, but costs like that. And it's capped at $2,500. So no matter how much they incur in that area, it would be capped at $2,500.
Okay.
Just one comment is, is I think it's important to go ahead with this. There is a possibility, depending how redevelopment plays out, that there'll be an extra million dollars coming to the city that used to go to the housing fund. And to me, this infrastructure is important, so there is a possible funding source. It isn't, we're not just grasping it air here. But a lot of that has to be worked out, and I think we need to have this in place so we can make a good decision once we figure out how redevelopment's going to play out and how our next year's budget's going to look.
Any other comment from council? I open it up to the public. Any comment from the public? Seeing none, I bring it back to council for a motion.
Move approval.
Seconded.
That motion carries by all present.
Okay, and we are pulling six. Okay. Postponing, I'm sorry, postponing. And then we're down to item seven, professional services agreement between the city of South Lake Tahoe and Northwest Hydraulics Consultants. So Tom, maybe you can say that better than I can.
No, I can't. You did a good job. My concern is, and I discussed it with Tony on my pre-agenda meeting, is this is another unfunded mandate that we have to do. It's a lot of money. I know it's grant money, but the good news is, from my perspective, I'm very confident with our staff that we have now that this is going to be followed through on and followed up on and monitored closely, not like past grants we've had in engineering studies. So I'm confident with it. Just want to make sure, and my other question was on the TMDLs, and I guess it dovetails into that TMDL issue for us. So if you look at the work project here, it talks about, you know, a detailed pollutant load reduction plan. I don't know what the hell that is, but it's, I'd like to see it. So here comes Sarah. She'll tell me what that is.
Good morning, Mayor, council members. Sarah Husong-Johnson, Director of Engineering. Yes, this is our first, one of our first submittals that we are proposing to move forward with under our new permit with La Houghton. The permit calls for us to develop a pollutant load reduction strategy to determine how we are going to meet our 10% load reduction over the permit term. So essentially, this document is the guiding plan for how we get there, and I think it's an important one to move forward with despite our ongoing negotiations with La Houghton, because ultimately, there will be, I'm sure at the end of all this discussion, some sort of pollutant load reduction requirement, and this lays the pathway for what that, how the city addresses that need and what we decide to do, what actions we take to reduce our pollutant load here in the city.
Now, will this also identify the cost to do that, too?
Yes, it will look at cost. It will look at feasibility. It will identify the, there will be recommended opportunities identified, and all this will be brought back to council for discussion as to...
And funding sources, too?
I'm not sure how detailed we'll go into funding on this, but certainly if there's grant opportunities, we'll look at that, or to the extent that we need to evaluate what the impact is to the general fund, we'll certainly look at that.
Okay. So you're on it.
We're on it.
Question for you, if I may. Part of this, 111,000 is being paid by the conservancy. Is the rest being paid by the city?
That is correct. It's approximately 50%. That $111,000 is a pollutant load reduction grant that were received from the conservancy back in 2009, and the remainder is coming out of our general fund budgeted money for the stormwater program.
It's a lot of money, and the ticker keeps going.
We'll be looking at roads as a solution to some of this. So just to give you an example, things we'll be looking at will be improved maintenance efficiency of how we operate and maintain the roads, whether they're, what the impact is of paving and actions like that that we take on our roads, in addition to opportunities in highly connected areas for projects. And we'll actually be going, you know, we'll be going as far to look at preliminary designs for what those projects are and what the potential load reductions of those projects may be. So it's going to be a real practical working document. One other idea would be what impact single-family or commercial residential BMPs would have on our ability to reduce pollutant loads. It'll be a very practical kind of working document that we will be bringing back to council and working with you on to determine how we want to get there and what strategy we want to take.
And the other concern I had, and it's addressed on page eight, is dispute resolution. We've had contracts in the past. Item 19, there is a process in here, goes to the city manager for dispute, once it's identified by staff, and then it goes to Superior Court. So there is a process for dispute resolution in a prompt manner.
Okay. Sure.
Last question for you.
Sure.
Would this study be necessary if they had, if La Houghton had not changed permit process to include TMDLs?
Technically, no, because there would be no pollutant load reduction requirement, so therefore, we would not be having to determine how we get to that 10% load reduction. All those kind of, the metric change in which we're now looking at pollutant load reduction and credits to assess that or quantify that is all new language in the new permit. So to answer your question, I would, I'd say the answer is no. However, we have been targeting projects that we know on a face value do have high pollutant load reduction opportunity, for example, Bijou. So we've already been kind of moving in this direction previous to the permit, but no, this specific study would not be required.
Just have one question. Says that they responded to the RFP and were recommended. Were they the only respondent to the RFP?
No, we put an RFP out in 2010 for various monitoring service and stormwater permitting related requirements. Other projects that were undertaken under that RFP was the Trout Creek, or excuse me, the Upper Truckee River Monitoring. So there were a number of consultants that responded to that. But we've been using Northwest Hydraulics. We utilize them for our baseline pollutant load calculation in the city, and then we utilize them again to adjust that for the connectivity element. And so they're very intimately familiar with the pollutant load reduction model as a result of that work. They also completed this similar study for Placer County, who was pleased with their efforts. And so I think, you know, we can build upon the experience they've gained working for Placer County to work with the city.
So we issued an RFP, but ideally, we would like them to continue, so.
Well, we issued an RFP to solicit consultants back in 2010 for a selection pool, and we are continuing to select Northwest Hydraulics out of that pool.
All right. Thanks.
Sure.
Last question. Were there local contractors that submitted contracts as well? Because these guys are out of Pasadena, aren't they?
I believe they have an office out of Sacramento, Northwest Hydraulics, but the staff that's working on this, Brent Wolf, he's a local here in Tahoe. He lives in the South Shore.
Thanks.
Sure.
Any other questions from council? Seeing none, I will open this up to public comment. Is there any member of the public who would like to comment on this? Bring it back to council. Do I hear a motion?
Move to accept staff's recommendation, approve the professional service agreement with Northwest Hydraulic Consultant at a cost not to exceed $211,000 with a 10% contingency of 21-1, and authorize the mayor to execute the PSA.
That motion carries by all present.
Okay, and we move on to item number eight. Bruce, you pulled this, and this was a grant of easement agreement for the South Tahoe Public Utilities District on city-owned property at Coal Creek and Pioneer Trail Pump Station.
I have no problem in granting the easement to STPUD. We've worked with them for years. They're a known quantity. What I'm concerned about is paragraph number seven of the easement. I'd like to strike that. I don't think this easement should just be freely assigned. I think that if for some reason there's a demise of STPUD and it has to go to someone else, let the future council decide whether the easement gets passed at that point. It will affect what STPUD wants to do, but I just think that leaving an open-ended assignment is not a good policy. So I'd like to strike number seven. Yeah, page two on the bottom.
If I could just provide a little bit of background information on that particular paragraph. Hillary Roverud, Director of Development Services. STPUD had approached us actually to grant two easements, an easement both to STPUD and to Liberty Energy. Liberty Energy also has utilities that serve the pump station, and in review, in the city attorney's office, they felt that it would actually be a cleaner and more simpler route to go, is just to grant the easement to STPUD and then allow them to grant additional easements on their behalf.
I don't think that STPUD would be granting an easement. They would just be granting permission to use their easement.
Right. It's the rights of access.
Liberty would not have a standing as a grantee, and if we remove paragraph number seven, it would not affect that relationship. But again, I just think that one day STPUD is no longer around, and there's been changes circumstances that the future council decide to proceed with the easement, which they probably would, but does not make it automatic. And again, I don't think allowing anyone else to use the easement in conjunction with STPUD is not, there's no necessity of making them a grantee or an assany under this easement. So I think we should strike it.
Tom?
Let me turn this around. Do we have the same provision when we were asking for easements?
I don't know, in terms of other easements that we've received from STPUD.
I mean, if it works one way, it should work both ways.
Yeah, I'm not sure if in the past, when we've asked for grant, easements from STPUD, whether, whether this language is in there.
I'd like to know that answer first.
The only thing I can say is that we probably don't need the, I don't remember in three years I've been sitting here whether we ever had an easement issue in reverse. It's probably not very common between us. But anyway, I'm just saying is, let's not grant an easement where future assignments are beyond our control or comment.
I guess I would just ask the city attorney that if we strike paragraph 11, would they still have the rights to allow access by still have the rights to allow access by other utilities?
Paragraph seven?
Right, I'm sorry.
Can the language just be simply changed that it needs permission of the city? Is that what you're asking?
Well, I think you could change the language by saying that STPUD would, is entitled to let other people use the, other entities use the easement on a as-needed basis, but I, the way I read this, it says, assignment of rights under this easement. That's how the heading reads. And that means to me that if tomorrow STPUD goes out of business and someone else takes over, let's say TRPA takes over, do we want the assignment to go to TRPA?
Well, that's an easy answer.
As an illustration, okay?
They could assign it to somebody else, is what you're saying.
That's right, that's right. So let's-
Should we bring this, can we bring this back to council?
Is it urgent today? I mean, the way I read it, they could still grant a license or an encroachment or whatever on it, but they could not give an easement to Liberty Energy. And I don't know if that was their intent or not at this point.
Mr. Randy Curtis from STPUD is here in the audience, and perhaps at public comment, he could clarify what their needs are.
I just want to question, this land really has no value to us, it's just a liability. We're, they're indemnifying us against anything that happens on that property. Right now, we're responsible for anything that happens on that property, whether somebody gets hurt out there. I just, I just don't see the purpose, but I'll listen to it. It's a small piece of property, it's going to be used specifically by the Public Utilities District, and they're going to indemnify us if anything happens on that land.
I fully support that. I fully support the granting of this easement to STPUD. I don't support granting this easement to future entities that I don't know of at this time. That's all I'm saying. And again, I agree with the city attorney. We can grant permission, or they can grant permission for other people to, other entities to use it. So there's no issue there. It's just that this language says that STPUD can grant to somebody else and assign their rights under the easement, and we might, there might be changes circumstances at that point. You know, STPUD probably be around for another 50 years at least. So I don't think it's a real heavy issue, but I'm just saying is, let's not grant an open assignment. I think that's the wrong policy.
City Attorney, should we postpone this? Do you want to look at-
Strike seven. Well, it's up to the council if you want to hear from-
We would.
I'm Randy Curtis, I'm the Field Operations and Operations Manager for South Tahoe BUD. A little history on this, this property was actually started, was taken over, running of it in 1974 from the old Globin Tahoe South Side Water Company, which was probably in existence since '59, I think around in that area. So as far as that paragraph seven, I think that most of that's coming from Liberty Energy and like Hillary said, we did, you know, I think both of us submitted a, an easement request. I'm not sure of the stance of Liberty Energy and what they want to require. They have, instead of overhead, now all their utilities are underground. So they're pretty critical, they seem to be on their easement request. I don't know if striking paragraph seven is going to make a difference for that. The only other utilities that we would ever even probably approach to be in there would maybe be Southwest Gas, or it may be one of our subcontractors working on some of our facilities, but that would be pretty much it.
Again, I have no problem with that. It's just that the way the language reads is basically allowing some successor entity to receive these rights that we don't know who they are. And let's talk about Liberty Energy. They've been around for what, a couple of years now? What kind of track record do those guys have? Okay? So I'm just saying to you is, striking seven doesn't stop anything that STPUD wants to do to allow other contractors, other entities to use the same easement. And the only thing I'm saying is that for some reason STPUD disappears from the scene and this easement should not just be given away to someone else, some other entity, without us having at least a shot of reviewing who that is. They'll probably grant it, but let's make a knowing assignment, let's just not do a blind assignment, that's what this provides.
Tom?
I think, I guess my point is a little more of a greater issue than just this. It should be a policy on all easements, I guess is what I'm looking at. I've toured this property and it's no value to any of us, other than the pump station and maybe Liberty. So my concern is more of a bigger issue that on all easements, we probably should have this provision, as you discussed.
Perhaps, depends on circumstances, I suppose, but you know, if this was a private contract and I was reviewing it for a client, I would never allow an open-ended easement, like, open-ended assignment. I think it's a bad policy.
And I'm assuming at the easement, somewhere along the handshake deals between Elwood Johnson and Globin and South Tahoe BUD, it just didn't get recorded through the property file. So it was exactly, it's what it was.
Any other council comment? Public comment? I bring it back to council, is there a motion?
I would move to approve the grant of easement in favor of STPUD, but strike paragraph number seven from the easement language so that there is not an automatic assignment of these rights for the future.
Your second?
Second for discussion.
And further discussion?
I was going to ask your city attorney, does that, is that acceptable in a contract?
Yeah, it's definitely acceptable. It's a clause that can be negotiated, so there's no issue there.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Bring it to a vote.
That motion carries. By all present.
Okay, next item on the agenda, and I thank Bee Gorman for being here on this item and apologize to her for us not taking it up last time. It's an amendment to the professional services agreement between the City of South Lake Tahoe and the South Lake Tahoe South Shore Chamber of Commerce, AKA TahoeChamber.org, for business coaching, the amount of 153,125 of the state's Community Development Block Grant Funds to be amend, to amend scope of work and continue to deliver technical business coaching services and assistance with the facade improvement program to local businesses. And Hillary, are you going to present this?
Yes. Hillary Roveroot, Director of Development Services. This is a contract that would be funded through the Community Development Block Grant Funds. We were awarded $300,000 to continue the business coaching program through June of 2013. In the previous, with the previous grant, we had contracted with TahoeChamber.org to provide the business coaching services. And under that contract, 47 businesses were assisted with business coaching. 22 of them were existing businesses that were there to improve their skills, expand their products, or gain knowledge about how they could expand their business. And, I'm sorry, I lost my place here. 25 of them were entrepreneurs seeking to open new businesses within the city. Five of the businesses that went through the business coaching program and graduated did apply for business loans, also funded through this grant. And we have several others that are in the program now that have expressed an interest in pursuing a business loan in the future. TahoeChamber.org has 14 coaches that are all local business owners that are experts in their field. With this new grant, what we are proposing is that TahoeChamber.org expands their services to include more of the administrative services that had been handled by city staff in the past, and also to help with marketing the facade improvement program. What we are proposing to do, which still requires approval from the state, is taking a portion of the funds that were previously applied for business coaching and move those into the facade improvement program. One thing to note, however, is that by using the funds through CDBG, the, with this particular CDBG grant, the business owner that would be applying for a facade improvement program would have to qualify as a target income within the target income group, which is 80% of the area median. So we've decided to take a portion of these funds and put it towards potential facade improvement loans. And the draft guidelines we've put together were included in your packet. Those would still need to go to the state and get approval before we could shift those funds from business coaching to the facade improvement program. However, we propose to pursue that so that we can at least have, I call it kind of seed money for the facade improvement program, start marketing it, generating interest, and then we can see how many of those businesses that would be interested would qualify as the target income group. We don't expect that there will be a huge number of business owners that would qualify in that group, however, we think that there are likely some. And this would allow us, again, to get that program going. And in 2013, we're expecting that the notice of funding for the CDBG grant will allow for using, applying for facade improvement program funds that could go towards businesses where the owner is in the target income group, or the owner's employees are within the target income group. And we think that we'll have a lot more businesses that would be eligible with that potential future grant funding. Another funding option for the facade improvement program is our current CDBG program income, which also could be used where the business owner or the employees fit into that target income group. So again, we're proposing that we approach this grant money a little differently than what was applied for originally, to allow the startup of the facade improvement program, and then hopefully have additional funds next year that we can apply for to expand it so that more businesses are eligible. So this particular agenda item is for a contract with TahoeChamber.org to continue those business coaching services and also assist us with getting that facade improvement program off the ground. Any questions?
Clarifying questions, Hal?
My history with this loan program is they don't usually have a high repayment rate when you're loaning to startup businesses, and I understand that. Maybe you can explain to me what this facade improvement program is? Is it actually, this loan money is going to go into infrastructure facade improvements? And if so, is there a guarantee that the money will actually be used for some visible improvements, or do they have some discretion and they may use it for payroll or other things? And we don't see actually facade improvements.
Well, we've set up the guidelines with our intent that they would be used for physical improvements to the building. So you'll be able to notice it when you're driving down the street. And that's the criteria for a facade improvement program in general. And then we can create even more specifics if we need to in those guidelines, but it is specifically for the facade improvement, the visible facade. The business loans, however, can be used for other things that you may not see visibly on the exterior of the business.
Percentage of the-
And for the, I just want to be clear, for the facade improvements, not just the guidelines, we'd actually have an agreement with the property owner. That would specify what the money is to be used for. So you wouldn't be able to use it for payroll or-
The 135,000 microloans facade improvement, do you know what split it is for facade improvements and what is for loans?
No, I don't have that.
Is there discretion?
We didn't specifically state-
Because I would encourage that, under this program, majority, if not all, be used for facade improvements. I mean, that's our goal in everything we're doing with, whether it's a COP or whether it's that Sign Improvement Fund we've set aside, we really have a strong motivation among this council to see physical improvements in infrastructure. So if there is any discretion in that 135, I would err on the side of the facade improvements.
I agree with that 100%. I think we didn't want to specify one way or another to see how many we get eligible. We don't want to lock ourselves in and then find that we actually don't have very business own, very many business owners that are eligible for the facade improvement program, but they might be eligible under business loans. So we wanted to keep that a little bit flexible, but you know, that's the amount that we're setting aside, and certainly, we can work something into the program to make sure that there's priority based on the facade improvements.
Thank you. That's all.
Tom?
Yeah, I want to echo what Hal said. I think for, I know for me, and I think for the council, facade improvements are top priority along with signage, and those are things people can see and touch and visitors and locals every single day. So I want to reemphasize that. You made a comment about future requests. As I understand it, in the staff report, the money is pretty much expired as of December 31st, 2011, correct?
That was the previous grant.
Okay.
The 300,000 is a new grant.
So there's still more grant money available from other source for this?
Yes, we have the 300,000 that we have been awarded.
Okay.
And then we're anticipating there will be another notice of funding availability for 2013 that will also allow us to go apply for more money for a facade improvement program.
Can the other question have, since this is state grant money, all these programs and participants are in the City of South Lake Tahoe?
Yes.
So they have to be as a requirement?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I have one question. For the loan amounts for each of these go from 30,000, is that right? To 50,000, depending upon whether you have one or two structures that hit the street, is that correct?
That's the facade improvement program guidelines?
Yeah.
Yes, those are the maximums. They don't have to apply for that maximum, but yes.
Okay, and then I guess my next question is, so there's 150,000, that's essentially for businesses?
Right, like I said, we're not anticipating that there's going to be a lot of business owners that will fall into this target income group, which is a criteria for being able to use these funds. But we think that there will be a few, and it'll allow us to begin marketing the program so that we can get a better sense of how many businesses out there are interested in the program. But you're right, this amount of money, just in this grant, again, the original intent of this grant was to go towards the business coaching and business loans. So we're taking a portion of this and putting it towards facade improvements, but it's not going to repaint the entire town.
Any other clarifying questions from council? If not, I'd like to open this up to the public. We have first speaker, Van Campbell.
I'm going to go first.
Okay, be great, that'd be super.
So good morning, Mary Forte, council members. Thank you for your time this morning. You already have my letter, I think, in your packet that I sent last week. If you've had a chance to look at it, I won't stand here and read it. So in the letter, I sort of tie together a more holistic approach to economic development, which I think you've just heard from Hillary. I think we all know that the basic tenets of economic development are business retention and business expansion. And that's why this is so appealing to us, because we're able to retain existing businesses by providing them with coaching. And there are a number of speakers here today that I know are going to share with you sort of but for the coaching program, where they think they might be or where some of their clients might be. There's a couple of coaches here as well. I like this concept of being able to pursue the facade improvement, and we've said we will also assist in the sign incentive outreach, because it only makes sense for us to kind of work strategically alongside you in the stretch of Highway 50 that you're approaching, that we would go and work with those businesses. But Hillary's point that not all businesses are going to qualify, I think we need to really take that to heart. And the other piece of that is, if they do qualify, they probably need business coaching at the same time, or putting a pretty face on the front of the building may not get us where we're trying to go. We want to retain that business, we want to retain those jobs, we want to help that business grow and actually add jobs. So this is a really unique opportunity for us in our community, and I will tell you, it's kind of groundbreaking. There's not very many places who are approaching their economic development this way. And in the wave of having lost redevelopment funds, I think it's a really good collaborative tool that we have at our disposal. I know, Tom, you had asked for some stats the last time we were here. Hillary's given you some, the ones that are in my letter are a little bit more up to date because she had done her report based on where we finished in December, and we have had some new folks come through the door, although we've sort of softened on taking people at this point. So I wanted to just be available to answer any questions that you may have of me, and otherwise, I think there's a couple of coaches and- And otherwise, I think there's a couple of coaches and clients who want to kind of share their experience with you so you get a, a sense of how they feel about the program.
I had one question for you, and you were breaking down the numbers in terms of what these various coaching, the individual coaching is. For one business, and I don't, I think you had a, a number of about five thousand dollars was the, the overall coaching package. Am I wrong there?
Um, we didn't ever set that a business should have a specific dollar amount because then you really find yourself building plans to, to spend that amount of money, which seems kind of backwards to me. So what we actually do, I have a gentleman who works with us, whose name is Craig Hollingsworth, and Craig is here today. And Craig meets with the incoming business one-on-one. He spends a fair amount of time with them. He asks them a lot of questions. He looks at their financials, if they're an existing business, their current marketing plans, really where are they? How viable a business are they? And at that point, he then sits down and puts together what he thinks is an appropriate plan. So if someone is going to go after a business loan, they have to have a complete banker-ready business plan. They can't go for that loan, whether it's through the city's micro enterprise program or whether it's through private banking or SBA-backed, wherever it is, they have to have a business plan. But if they're not after a business loan and they're simply struggling with another component of their business, then their plan is probably going to be a lot smaller and would not be in that, anywhere near that five thousand dollar range. So we don't have a threshold at all. It's, it's completely based on the needs of the individual clients.
Be, I just want to ask on the professional coaching, they charge a hundred and forty-five dollars an hour. Is that predetermined or is that what you're recommending?
That's the ceiling that the coaches, that we bill to the coaches. Each of the coaches actually has a different billing rate based upon their expertise.
They're local business owners, I assume. They're not CPAs or attorneys.
Um, yes, we have a CPA and we have, we have a CPA firm who works with us. And that's a greatly, as you would know, discounted rate. Their normal rate is two hundred and seventy-five dollars an hour, so they discount that rate for us. And I would say that's probably one of the more valuable services that these businesses are getting. This firm has taken an unbelievable interest in small businesses in this community. They come in on their own time and host workshops for us, don't charge us for them. The city doesn't get charged for them. The clients aren't getting charged for them. And I'm hearing from the clients that but for this assistance. So definitely some very valuable professionals. One of the gentlemen that's here this morning has a marketing background that I suspect if you were to try to pay for him on the free market, you'd be looking at about three hundred and fifty to four hundred dollars an hour. So there's some very savvy, successful business people in this program. And I think that's, that's important also to look at really the multiplier of the investment that the city's making because these are all local business owners here. So you're also, you know, spending money on a local business and that money's now recirculating through our community as opposed to before we were successful in our proposal that we submitted to you. You were spending this money out of the basin on a contractor who was located in, I think it was Chico. I'm not positive really because, and that, so that money was leaving our community altogether. So that's definitely a benefit as well.
Meaning they get paid more than an attorney?
I, I think once you see this gentleman's work, the one in particular I'm talking about-
I know the value of marketing.
Yeah, yeah, he's, he's pretty savvy. We're very blessed to have him in our community, really. We have a number of small businesses who have some very sophisticated marketing now that they would not have had otherwise.
Any other clarifying questions from council? Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Members of the public, Van Campbell. Van here? Oh, there he is.
It's actually Jan. No, that's okay. My name's Jan Campbell. I'm the owner of Dollar Signs and I'm one of the coaches on the small business program. It's no secret that small businesses are the heart of this community. They help create jobs, they provide services, and it's been some tough years for many of those businesses. I've personally helped several, you know, get off the ground as well as existing businesses, develop a marketing plan, help them with their logos, their branding, their websites, their online marketing. Currently working with some startups like Rich Aquariums, Duncan Tree Service, California Colors is a long-term established business that's been needing some help, trying to get to that new level of, of marketing and use the internet to, to create more business for themselves. So I'm here on behalf of them. They've all really benefited from the program. And I'd just like to ask that we continue to move forward, get this budget approved and give them a chance to sit back down with me on a daily basis and give me a chance to continue helping them.
And how much do you charge an hour?
A hundred.
Hundred, yeah. So this is a variable rate depending on the type of services?
No, that's my discounted rate.
You own a couple of businesses too.
Yeah, I own a store, computer store.
Maybe we'll get some marketing in here.
WhatsApp?
Maybe we'll get some marketing in here.
Yeah, indeed. Happy to help.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
David Mullin?
Good morning. I'm David Mullin. I'm kind of nervous here. I own a small catering company, Exquisite Grill. And I started the company about four years ago and it was just kind of a side project. You know, I love cooking, I went to culinary school and everything. But I hate working in restaurants and, you know, I bought a grill and just started doing the side project. And someone told me about the Tahoe Tactical Team. You know, I wanted to make this a full-time, full-time job. And I've been involved with them for about a year. And, and since that year, I've come up, I have an up, up and running optimized website. You know, I have a, my own logo, a lot of help from Jan. He put a lot of time in with me, a lot of it on his own. You know, we're kind of neighbors. I have the tools to successfully market my, my services. I've since become a full-service catering option in our community. Actually have an accounting system. And that was through the, the accountants. They helped, they taught me how to do QuickBooks and all that. And I'm currently in the final stages completing a viable, viable business plan in order to obtain a, the business loan, which will enable me to expand my services and create at least two full-time and six part-time employee positions. What I'd like to do is get down to have two grills, two trucks, be able to do two jobs at the same time. And it's getting to that point, you know, I hate turning down jobs because I have a date already booked. You know, and, and, and I, I would like, personally, I'd like to continue in my involvement with the tactical team so I can go on and, and get that business loan. You know, it's kind of like I'm stuck in limbo. I can't meet the accountants to finish up the financial plan until this gets okayed. And, and, and I'm definitely stuck on my own. And I, and I know, you know, a couple of other companies that have benefited from this program. So, you know, I'd like to see it go on, you know, and, and, you know, at least for the people that are kind of stuck in limbo like myself. You know, and, and because I'm really looking forward to, you know, doing a lot more than what I've been doing, you know, within this community. So, thank you.
Craig Hollingsworth?
Good morning. Good morning, I'm Craig Hollingsworth. I'm the coordinator of this program with the chamber there with Be. My background is a former college professor in business. Degrees in economics, business administration, and I went to law school. So from a-
Probably strike against you, but it-
I hesitate to mention that. In my experience, it's been, you know, you, you work with students through the years and you watch them graduate, but you rarely get to see the end success of the efforts that were put in. This is program particularly is, is rewarding in as much as that we can see results such as David and several, I mean, numerous other clients that we have. We can see them go from a struggling business who may have expertise in a particular area such as cooking or auto repair, let's say, baking, a variety of different things. But they lack all the business acumen to successfully run a business. And therein lies the stumbling blocks that they fall down. With this program, we're able to put together sort of a truncated, small version of business school with the help of these experts. And we put them through these steps in sort of a crash course, if you will, to teach them what is necessary, the, the essential elements so that they can succeed. So that they can then market successfully what they do best. Everything from, from learning accounting, basic accounting, how to produce a balance sheet, P and L statements, not to make them experts, but just so that they understand enough so they can talk with bookkeepers, accountants, bankers, et cetera. With marketing, same sort of a thing. We're blessed to have some, I wished I had some of these people on my, one of my former programs. I was program director for Sierra Nevada College, also San Jose State, University of Nevada Reno Truckee Meadows System. So I wished I had some of these people teaching in my program years ago with the qualities that they possess. So in, in short, we're able to help these folks. Some come in, successful businesses, that just need a little bit of a tune-up. The markets changed, their marketing techniques haven't. Their operational organizational system hasn't kept up with their change and how they should be moving their business forward. So we can step in and help them with little segments. Those that, that want to complete business plan that, and that's one of the requirements of the program. If you're going to apply for the biz, the low-interest business loan through this grant money, you have to complete the entire program and have a, a physical printed business plan. By, by the time they go through that entire process, they become very knowledgeable. And it's, the analogy that I like to use is they then become the driver of their business as opposed to a passenger in a runaway car in the backseat. So they become in control of their business and they actually drive, run, and control their business as opposed to just sort of a leaf in the, in the stream drifting down, you know, with little or no direction. So as a result, we see some pretty fantastic successes out of this. And there's a lot more in the process that are well on their way towards achieving that success as well. Any questions? Yes, sir.
Comment, Craig. The, it's amazing how many businesses don't have a business plan.
I would estimate conservatively, at least eighty-five to ninety percent don't. Over ninety-five percent that come to us, don't.
And coming out of business school and, and understanding marketing, a business plan is a roadmap.
Yes, sir, it is.
It's absolutely critical you have one.
That's the, that's the analogy I use. We're planning a trip from Lake Tahoe to Chicago. You don't just get in the car, load up the fuel and take off. You got to think about where you're going to stay, where you're going to stop, what the weather conditions, you're going to take the northern route, the southern route. All those things have to be brought into consideration.
Economic markers you can achieve.
Absolutely.
It's, an important part of a marketing and business plan is the competitive analysis.
Absolutely, we break that section up in marketing. I've, I've dissected this into three sort of modules, if you will, that they go through. The first one, organization and operation, so that they truly understand what they do, how they do it, and create some efficiencies there and eliminate some of the inefficiencies. Once they understand what they do, how they do it, then they can move on to marketing and try to understand who they sell it to and what methods are best to reach their target markets. So we go through market analysis, competitive analysis, establish a competitive advantage, and they create a strategy. Once that's all done, now they understand what they're going to do. They're going to buy ads here, they might do a little radio advertising here or whatever. They researched the cost. Now we move them to financial. The financial boys take over and say, this is what it's going to cost. This is the sales projections you hope based on this target market that you can garner and the revenue stream that's going to result as, by implementing all of these modules.
Another important part is maybe there isn't a market for their business.
Absolutely, we've had several that come in and, and wanted to, to start a particular business. Through the marketing analysis, they've discovered there is no target market. They've thence either changed their mind, put it on hold, or switched to something else that does have an actual market demand. So by, on those, those are as much as a success by keeping these people from, from failing as are the successes of the people like David and some of the others that are here to speak today.
Any other questions from council? Thank you.
Thank you.
James Barr?
Good morning, mayor, council and staff. I am James Barr. I'm a Tahoe Tactical Team coach. I promise to be faster than the guy who preceded me because it scared me to see expired under his name. I don't, that's, I don't like that. I've been on the, a member of the coaching program from day one and my area of expertise is marketing. That's my background. I'll get back to that in just a moment. Since the program began, I've coached a total of thirteen clients. These people were total strangers to me, but I have spent over seventy hours with these people. That equates to eight and a half straight days of conversation and coaching focused entirely on creating and implementing a basic marketing plan. Now back to my area of expertise. This will not be a verbal resume, but I've got to go through some of this to give you a little snapshot of who one of the coaches is. I've been involved in marketing and communications for over four decades. More than half of those years were in senior executive creative positions at two top US ad agencies. One was in Chicago, thirteen years, and other in Los Angeles for fourteen years. I've worked on brands and products from respected multinational companies like General Motors, Procter &amp; Gamble, Pillsbury, Kellogg, Nestle, Nissan, and even Mattel Toys. For thirteen years, I was responsible for creating and producing Mazda TV commercials, print ads, brochures, and more. I've made twenty-five trips to Japan for meetings with their management, spent a lot of time over there and, you know, at very high levels. In all of these positions, I was a strategic partner with very top marketing executives at these top companies. I've worked with a lot of smart people and helped create sales success and brand development for all of them. Now that I'm in Tahoe and as a coach on the, on the tactical team, I've got a pretty good toolbox, a forty-year-plus toolbox to draw from. Lots of experiences around the world. Lessons learned in Tokyo, Hiroshima, where Mazda is located, or Chicago, or a boardroom in Manhattan are directly applicable at a coffee shop here in Lake Tahoe as I sit and talk with, and coach with my, my thirteen clients and hopefully more. Here's what I know finally in closing for sure. Our clients are much further ahead in their basic business smarts with the program than they'd ever be without the program. It's as simple as that. And how can you possibly ever put a price tag on that? Thank you.
Any questions of Mr. Barr?
Any questions?
Thanks, sir. Zior Ferk?
Zion Fink.
Uh, that, I'm sorry?
It's my fifth grade chicken special.
Not even close, but I apologize.
My name is Zion Fink. I run TechTastic. We're an IT provider here on the South Shore. And my problem is only unique in that I've got far too much business. And that sounds like a good problem to have in this economy, but it's actually quite prohibitive. And taking my, my stress level out of the picture, kind of like Craig was alluding to, I was going in a hundred directions and it's great, and yes, I want all this business, but, but where do I go and what do I do with it? I don't want to equate the coaching program to a life raft, life raft in the middle of the ocean, but it's certainly a, a large board that floats well. They've kind of helped me get a grasp on, on my business as well as my life and my stress level. I'm clearly seeing, because of the influx of business, without any marketing yet, I'm looking forward to meeting with James, by the way, a demand in Tahoe for professional IT services. I get demands from many businesses here. I would say seventy percent of my clients are here, but I do have clients in Reno, Carson, Incline, et cetera. And I basically just didn't know how to go to the next level. I enjoy being busy, but what can I do for the long term? How can I possibly hire someone when I'm already so busy? I don't know how to deal with payroll. Can I pay that person? Clearly, once I get there, I can, but I'm struggling to get there. And they're helping me make sense of the chaos and it has been a real, real benefit for me. My second point that I'd like to mention is the financing that's available. I had excellent credit up until a couple of years ago and I short-sailed a home. And that, of course, kind of puts a damper on things for about three years. And here I am, I've got a, a strong business and now mediocre credit, and I just need that little bit of help to get to the next level. So I'm going through that process and I'm excited. And I see a light at the end of the tunnel now because of that potential financing that's available for me at the end of this program. I've already hired one person. As soon as I get a check, I will definitely be hiring a second. And my business plan already shows that I can afford to pay that person. So I'm very excited about it. So I, I guess that's the, the summary. And I would just encourage you guys to continue supporting the program because as a, a new Tahoe local and a place that I would like to make my home for the foreseeable future, it's a real benefit to me, so thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Any other public comment? Seeing none, I bring it back to council for council comment.
I'd just like to add that I have actually seen this program in process, and the wide range of businesses that have been helped through this program are really quite spectacular. And the only thing that I would like to add is that I wish there was a possibility of being able to post somewhere some of your success stories. I know that I was, had intended to do it at one point, but to post somewhere the success stories because it really is quite incredible, the ingenious ideas and, and new faces trying to establish businesses here. Any other comments on the part of county?
I just want to make a comment. I'm very impressed with the talent and quality of, of the coaches that we have in this community. We're very privileged to have folks like you living in our community and sharing your expertise. Marketing's my forte. I love it. I can live and breathe it. But it's really impressive to have that kind of a caliber here to teach our community, probably unprecedented in many small communities.
Make a motion to approve stack recommendation and execute the professional service agreement and authorize the mayor to sign it.
Take the word execution. Could you use a different word?
It's like a legal term, doesn't it?
That motion carries. By all present.
Madam Mayor, would you mind if we took a brief break before the next item, or would you want to go into it?
We can take a brief break. Thanks, everybody, for showing up for this one. Appreciate it. And the next item on the agenda is regional plan update status report and for discussion and possible direction. Hillary.
Hillary Rovere, Director of Development Services, here for your regular update. You have in your packet a status report that reports the activities of the regional plan update committee from two weeks ago. There were additional meetings that occurred last week, which Mayor Fortier and myself can provide you with some additional update on. But before we get to that, we do have Arlo Stockham from the TRPA staff here today to provide you with just a very short presentation overview on the direction of the regional plan update from the perspective of the TRPA staff. So, I'd like to introduce him first.
I think Arlo is one of the most requested people in the basin right now. Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor, and council members. I appreciate you having me here. Hillary asked me to, to come over to your council meeting and just give you a short update on who I am and kind of what's going on with the regional plan update from our perspective over at TRPA. So, if that's agreeable, I may be five or ten minutes giving that perspective, and then you may very well have questions I'd be happy to answer. So, I, I understand very well that TRPA has had a bumpy relationship with local governments in the area, with some businesses in the area. And I've lived up in the North Shore and in Truckee since the late nineteen eighties, so I've kind of seen it from the outside. Yeah, which makes the lake dirtier, all those dirt roads. So, with that being said, I was brought in in mid-September of last year to be the new regional plan manager with a clear direction to be an agent of change. John Hester was initially hired, and I worked with John in the, the mid-nineteen nineties down in Reno. And as he kind of started grasping the situation, he realized he needed help and that we needed to focus more on accomplishing good and less on micromanaging every aspect of development in the region, which is inconsistent with the compact and really not productive in the long term. So, with that being said, maybe a minute or two on my background, I think it's instructive for where we're coming from. I, I'm a second-generation planner. Our family business was planning. So, in college, I spent my spare time helping develop master plans and development codes for mostly small and middle-sized cities and counties, primarily in the Midwest. I grew up in Madison, Wisconsin. I moved out here because I loved to ski and I love the mountains. And went, went back to school and, and got some training in planning and worked through much of the nineties, public sector planning down in the Reno area. Worked for the Regional Planning Agency down there and then for the city of Reno, starting as a planner and ending as their planning manager. During that time, we did complete rewrites of our master plan, our development code, and I was also the point person on the regional plan update down there. So, that was kind of the public sector experience in the time I worked together with John Hester in what I consider to be a fairly effective public agency. Then after that, I went into private consulting, and I've done design and permitting of everything from small commercial centers all the way up to a twelve-thousand-home master plan community that we got permitted. I did that during the boom years, say, two thousand and six, and continuing through the recession. So, I think that background, especially with the private sector knowledge, gives me some perspective that, that may not have been fully appreciated over at TRPA. In terms of the, the regional plan update, I came to find out this has been going on since two thousand and four. And a lot of work's been put into it, but really not a lot of tangible progress has been made in terms of producing and gaining approval of policy changes. So, my job is to make that happen. There's a narrowed scope of the plan update, which was endorsed by the governing board in last summer, two thousand and eleven. And since I started in September, we've been working very hard. I know Claire and Hillary have been putting in more time than they would like, I'm sure, through this regional plan update committee. But as of last week, we've received endorsement of nearly all the policy changes as part of this regional plan packet. And there's a, a lot of what I consider to be good change in that packet, but not all the change that's necessary over the long term. Change is a difficult process. From our perspective, the changes, the amendments that are moving forward, really fall into three categories. The first, and probably the most important, is actively promoting redevelopment and reinvestment, especially in the urbanized areas. TRPA, our regulations for a long time have served as an effective barrier to reinvestment and redevelopment. We basically allow non-conforming uses to continue, but the requirements for new development or for redevelopment are so stringent that very few people can afford to do it. It's just a simple economic situation. And the science is clear. Redevelopment not only benefits the economy, but it benefits the environment. So, our focus is removing some of the regulatory barriers that are preventing positive change from happening at the rate that I think everyone would like. We're also looking at some pretty strong incentives to promote redevelopment. Probably most prominent among those incentives are the transfer ratios for transfers of development rights. We have transferable development rights. They've been in place since the late eighties, but they're set up, so basically, no one wants to utilize them for the most part. It just costs too much. You don't get as much out of it as you have to put into it. So, they're not very effective. So, we have endorsed some dramatically strengthened and more aggressive transfer ratios that would allow you to take, for an example, a home, an old rundown home in a stream zone that's pretty impactful environmentally, restore that land and trade it for three residential units in a town center. We use bonus units for that transfer match, and we hope that that will really provide some, some meaningful environmental improvement and some meaningful economic opportunities. And really, that's, that's our goal. It's, it's a win-win. The history has shown all around the country that when you try hard to balance the environment and the economy, you can do it. They don't have to be mutually exclusive. And our situation's a little limiting because we have this compact and environmental thresholds, which are fairly unprecedented in the country, that does set limits. It, it says the environment has to be at that equal or higher pedestal of the economy, but it doesn't have to be administered in a way that's so impactful. There, there are better ways, and we're actively pursuing making those changes. Probably the second main topic for amendment are process improvements. Right now, most development of significance has to get double approval. A local government approval in this room, I'm sure, and then a TRPA approval. We don't need to administer the plan that way. It's an inefficient process, it's unpredictable for landowners, and it's not the best use of, of public funds. So, I'm sure you've heard updates about what have been called the local plans, and they were renamed as of last week, area plans. But it basically allows the municipalities to develop plans for whatever areas or area or areas you choose. And as long as those plans include protections that get to environmental improvement, they can get what's called a conformance review approval from TRPA and function as the development plan for an area. And as part of those area plans, the committee has endorsed a lot of increased flexibility on just how, which strategies are used to deal with development, to deal with environmental improvement, and, and opportunities to modify the TRPA regulations to be more effective and more sensible for the individual communities in the area. Along with those area plans, a lot of additional permitting would be exempted from TRPA review. Potentially, all but the very largest projects could be approved by the local governments in accordance with the conforming plan. So, we think that will allow TRPA to focus where we should be focused, on regionally significant topics, and leave the detailed local government planning to the local governments who know their communities best. That's probably enough on the process. Probably the third category are regulatory reforms. The deeper I dive into our plans and codes, the more I appreciate just how complex it is and how difficult to navigate the regulatory system is. And I was honestly shocked to hear things like trails. A bike trail requires the purchase of coverage, which can cost hundreds of thousands of dollars, sometimes a million dollars a mile, I understand. We treat a bike trail the same as a parking lot today. It just, anyway, that's being amended or recommended for change. The issue of back decks, people can't build a back deck because they don't have adequate coverage, and people move to Tahoe to enjoy the outdoors, yet they can't put a deck on their house. That's targeted for change. And one of the biggies, which has a lot of potential, long-term to grow, are what was discussed last week. Basically, stormwater facility plans, which could supplement and/or replace the site-specific BMP requirements that have been in place for so long and are really quite costly to build and administer. It was another kind of eye-opener when I showed up here, that we don't have stormwater facility plans, for the most part, on a kind of catchment basis. We basically do a separate plan for every parcel. There's more than forty thousand parcels in the region. If you're doing a plan for every parcel, it's just simply not the most effective way to get at clean water. It's, it's expensive, and you don't get as much bang for the buck. So, the committee endorsed what are being called area-wide BMPs. So, it's an opportunity for South Lake Tahoe or other communities to develop stormwater management facility plans for individual areas instead of just simply requiring BMP retrofit on every parcel. That, we think, has potential to grow into a, a much more effective way to get at a clean Lake Tahoe. And those, that's really the gist of, of what's being amended. There's some targeted additional amendments, but it really falls in those categories. All the, the big wish list of planners, when I showed up in the office of, wouldn't it be great to just remake our whole plan and rezone every parcel? That's not the priority. The priority is amending some of these really onerous provisions that are getting in the way of positive redevelopment and positive investment in our communities, and that's what we're focused on doing. Procedurally, the committee is nearly through the policy amendments. We're going to rapidly be transitioning into the implementation chapter and the ordinance amendments. We are scheduled for a March twenty-eighth release of draft plan, draft code, and an EIS for those two documents after the public review comment period, a round of amendments in fall. We're targeting a November or December final adoption date. With that being said, not everyone believes these changes are the right way to go. I've been pleasantly surprised that the number of topics that have been endorsed by unanimous vote, we just tallied it all up and kind of summarized it, and there are nine specific topics that have been non-unanimous. But things like increasing building height in the town centers, increasing density in the town centers, did pass unanimously, but some of the important topics didn't. There was a, there were dissenting votes, basically representing the California statewide constituency. And there will need to be a negotiation and some sort of consensus-building attempt before final adoption to try to resolve these issues, avoid litigation, avoid potential splitting of the agency under Nevada Senate Bill 271. So, it's far from over. And speaking of far from over, probably the one point I'd like to emphasize more than anything for this committee is that, in my opinion, having come from the outside and now seen from the inside how TRPA works, these changes are the start, they're not the end. The TRPA system needs to evolve. It's twenty-five years old, and you can tell. We're targeting some of the important things, but there's more work to be done. Change isn't easy. It's not always quick as we might like, but you have a group over there now that, that is committed to make some changes. With the overriding constraint of these changes we're making, do still have to ensure the environmental restoration and the protection of Lake Tahoe. That's really our bottom line in the compact. It doesn't require us to micromanage every permit, but it does require us to protect the environment. So, I guess in summary, that's about where the plan is going from my perspective. And with that, I'd be happy to turn it over to Hillary or answer any questions you may have.
Tom, you have some questions?
Yeah. You know, the, we've had twenty-five years of a regional plan that, in my opinion, has been really a failure in, in many aspects. Some in the environmental, it's been a, a positive. Some it's been a failure, but for the business side of working with the businesses, it's, it's been a failure. In their quest to protect us, they made us obsolete. So, that's as important. And it's not about one member of a board who can yell the loudest. I'm really impressed with the collaboration, as you said and you mentioned. My question to you is, the League to Save Lake Tahoe, have you reached out to them? You know, they, they have a business model they've used since the eighties is to yell and scream and then litigate. That business model is no longer, in my opinion, a valid business model today's world, and we're trying to reach out to them. As you know, the city won the lawsuit against the league, first time in the history, and I'm surprised it doesn't make headlines because it does when they file. But are you trying to reach out to the League to Save Lake Tahoe and then see if we get them on board so they don't litigate?
Yes. And honestly, initial meetings were a bit frustrating. It was hard, it was hard to get to positive agreement on much of anything. I understand there's a new director coming on board, maybe even today, that we're really hopeful we can work together because at the end of the day, I think all of us want to keep Tahoe blue. I spent a fair bit of time with, over the last few months, with the League to Save Lake Tahoe, with Sierra Club reps, and with others from the environmental community. And I was really trying to flesh out, what do you think needs to change? Everyone seems to be up at the podium saying, the current system isn't quite working right, but now we have to get to solutions. And I was a little stymied, honestly. It was, the only solutions that I was able to hear were stricter enforcement, tighter regulations. And I think history has shown that, that with the regulations we have now, people aren't reinvesting, and tighter regulations aren't going to get us there. It's just going to be tighter regulations that are never used. So, we haven't made a lot of progress. They're not in support of these changes. We're going to continue to reach out and try, and I guess that's about the best I can say.
We have, I have lunch tomorrow, I think, with Tony, with the new executive director. We'll be asking those questions.
Yeah. We're, we're very hopeful that, that there can be an atmosphere of collaboration. Yeah, we're, we're very hopeful that, that there can be an atmosphere of collaboration with all the different interest groups moving forward.
Hal?
Just welcome this incoming. I spent 12 years in that agency, and almost everything you've talked about is we've been pushing for from a few of us electeds. Maybe it's Nevada's putting everything on the line is what motivated, I don't know what. But I just have a couple of specific questions, and maybe it's too late to put input in, I know this is well down the road. But, you know, the, the idea of giving an incentive for moving a single-family dwelling out of an SEZ and giving them two, two extra bonus units, I, what I always wanted to see was more conversion between the TAU, SFD, and CFAs. I mean, so is it, if you take any kind of development out of an SEZ and you want to take it into a community plan, can it be transferred to commercial floor areas, it just have to be single-family dwellings? And, and along that line, I always wanted to see incentives to move people out of community plans in the community plans. And a lot of the motels have a lot of coverage and TAUs, and I wanted to make sure that we can incentivize them to move into our community plans by converting that coverage and TAU units into CFA or whatever. We never know what 10 years is going to be, 10 years ago, a single-family dwelling unit of use was so valuable.
Right.
And now they aren't valuable at all, and if we want to see redevelopment in our community plans, it's commercial floor areas. So I just want to make sure that we're fluid enough in, in, in these units of use to allow the transfer of whatever the market may want to desire, as long as we don't increase the amount of coverage that's being transferred, or if we do, it's coming from retired lands or somewhere else.
Those are fantastic. I'll take them as suggestions, not as much as questions. In terms of what's being addressed, there are policies that allow the conversion of non-conforming coverage to commodities, non-residential or residential. There's been discussion of allowing conversion between commodities, for instance, from residential to tourist or commercial. Those aren't part of this packet, but they are part of things that need to be look at, looked at for additional change. Our, our scope was fairly limited, and honestly, there wasn't a, a good system ready to propose to replace kind of the, the strict, we have residential, we have CFA, we have tourists. So it's not in the current scope. But one thing that I think is very important that the committee is doing is what we're calling a to-do list. These are the topics that I think many people recognize need to be changed, but aren't in our current short-term scope. And we're currently putting together the first draft of the implementation element that has those listed out, and we're going to get some prioritization of what needs to be tackled first. So we're doing half of that, we're not doing the other half, we hope to, and your point on incentives is, is right on. The transfers applied to all types of commodities, not just residential, and that's the overarching goal, is provide incentives so people can utilize the remaining development rights, which is really only about 10% of the total build-out is, is left to go. Utilize those in our, in, for reinvestment in the town center, it's going to be a more environmentally sensitive land pattern, where people can get around walking or biking instead of so auto-dependent. It's going to provide, you know, more vibrant economic hubs, so that's kind of part of our overarching strategy. I hope that kind of answers your question, but the-
It's just because I didn't think it was part of this plan, but as long as it's on the radar, because we tried to incentivize conversion of TAUs into affordable housing, and we were successful doing that, but I wanted to go further and allow a lot of these dying motels outside of our community plans to incentivize them to come in, take their coverage and their units of use into the community plans, but if it's just a one-for-one, the numbers didn't work out. So if we incentivize them, I think we'll see a lot of the Trout Creek motels, et cetera, going away and, and that development going into where it's needed and, and hopefully give them some incentives to do that.
Yeah, and we're, we're certainly supportive of that. Mechanically, what's going to need to happen is there's going to have to be some detailed work, basically quantifying the, the per-unit impacts of each, each commodity type, so we can set what's basically a reasonable exchange ratio, whatever that may be, based on traffic impacts, you know, the, the overall scale. To, to have a fair system, I think that's kind of the, the preliminary work that would need to be done to set it in place.
Bruce?
I appreciate your comments. A couple of clarifications. TRPA has been around since 1969, so we're looking in excess of 40 years now. What the greatest crime here, though, is, is how much political planning has occurred that has injured our communities in the basin. The people that probably are the environmental groups that you are just referring to have effectively closed things down for us. And when I hear Joanne speak, even as recently as this last 271 meeting, she talks about, in effect, a new enlightenment for the TRPA and greater sensibility, sensitivity to local needs. Problem is, why couldn't this happen 10 years ago? Why couldn't this happen 15 years ago? People's lifetimes have expired, waiting for the agency to get off-center, and there's no appreciation, I think, that we're just looking forward. You know, I mean, the comments that Hal just made about greater flexibility in, in commercial or moving commercial to residential or vice versa is what the marketplace would normally do. But I, I urge you not to weigh too heavily the, the, the groups that are saying stricter enforcement, more regulations, disregard their views, let them file suit, because if we compromise again, I think you'll see the end of the bi-state agency as we know it. I would like to see it be successful, I'd like to see local government having more control, I would like to see a property owner going to the city, getting a permit for $25 to build a deck, and no more, and no more than that, okay? But it's so easy for the newer people coming in to gloss over the past and not to realize how long a period this has been, and how long, how many council members that have sat on the board, boards in the past, trying to get simple concessions and just pounding their head against the wall and achieving nothing. So I urge you, their view is, is a view that has caused us to be at this point, and to try to compromise with those that wish never to compromise is a waste of time. Let them file suit. But let's not, let's not take this opportunity and, and degrade what's trying to be accomplished here because there's a vocal minority that wishes to shut everything down at all costs. And so I hope that you come back with that. But look at the history. This is a, truly a crime against the people of, of South Lake Tahoe and other people in the basin, other communities in the basin, that we have been put on hold for so many years, and, and because of not planning, but because of political planning.
I think there's two issues in there. If, if I could bring back time, you know, if only. But I, I appreciate your comments, and it's a bit personal for me, too. You know, I'm, I've been up in North Shore, I lived in Kings Beach and Tahoe City, I've been in Truckee more recently, but the best man at my wedding moved out of the basin in large part based on his experience with TRPA and the BMP retrofit program and the inspectors, who 15 years ago gave him a really hard time. And he left. It was that, and the schools were dying because families were moving out of the region. And so in many ways, it, it's personal for me, too. I've, I've been over the hills, so, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm out of the valley, but I, I understand that, and I'm not sure, I'm not sure what I can offer beyond that.
But you can't offer anything, but you need to understand the past and that trying to go back to the old ways. I mean, do we really need a cap on commercial square footage? Was that a basis of, of science, or, or was it a basis of some political idea to stop growth in the basin? The whole thing with the BMPs, was that designed to make it difficult and make planning burdensome upon individual property owners, when the, the true approach was more of a neighborhood or regional approach to BMPs? Why weren't those things thought, thought about before? And the reason for that is political pressure from those that had control of the agencies, dictated solutions that were unworkable, but were, we had to live under. And, and, and again, so we should take advantage of this time where the pressure of 271 is, is upon the agency, where there's hopefully engagement with California, and, and make these rules work for us this time, instead of trying to, try to meet all, all groups' view on this, because I don't think you can. I think we need to do the right thing, regardless of what certain groups say needs to be done.
And that gets to the second point, if I could just very briefly. The pressure is not going to go away, but we, I think Claire has seen it, you know, we're advancing recommendations that we think are best in our professional judgment, regardless of what the noise is in the background about them. In terms of compromise, there's a hard reality that 10 votes isn't, 10 out of 14 isn't always enough to approve anything under our state law today. That's a challenge. If, if and when there are discussions for compromise to try to achieve the necessary votes and potentially avoid lawsuit, I don't know. Local governments need to be at the table. This shouldn't be TRPA staff dealing with two states. You know, local governments have six of the 14 appointees on the governing board, and like you said, you, you live with the, the outcome. So if and when those discussions happen, I would certainly want the local governments to be actively engaged, and if there's a compromise, it needs to be one that meets everyone's needs. And I'm a, I'm a big believer in, in consensus building, and if people speak with each other rather than at each other, they often find that they have more in common than they thought. One of my really proud moments is I got a 12,000-home community approved with a level of consensus that was unprecedented, and we were only able to do that through direct communications and compromising, and we were able to come up with something that was economically viable and met the environmental constraints of, of the region. And some sort of direct communication will be necessary at some point, and I think the committee process has, has generally been pretty, pretty positive. Clem Shude is the California rep on the committee, and he has not been obstructive. He's been, I think, you know, moving the stuff forward that he thinks is right. I think one of the, the things that stands out in my mind that Clem said was, he, he acknowledges that the regulations have been overly burdensome. He comes from an environmental background, and his concern is the pendulum swinging too far. So that's where he's coming from, and I think that's instructive in the discussions, that, you know, he, he's a key player there, and we're narrowing down the issues of disagreement and have a, well, the list fit on one page, so it could be worse.
Here's my point, and maybe I'm overly optimistic, and I hope Bruce is wrong, in a good way. My point is, with the League to Save Lake Tahoe and Sierra Club, and trust me, it's as hard for me to reach out to them, because I battled them for 25 years in lawsuits and everything else. I hope they see, because of litigation that we won in another case on the Nevada side, that business model they've used in the last 20 years doesn't work anymore. It is cooperation, collaboration. We're not all going to get what we want, but if they can sit down at the table with us and agree, there is give and take. No, if they draw a fine line, then litigate. But you know, litigation, I'd rather take that money and put it into the environment. I'd rather take that litigation money, put it into the built environment and redevelopment and, and help our businesses in this community. So maybe I'm over-optimistic, but it's a different world today. And in our regional plans and our general plan update that we just did, we know how to cross the Ts and dot the Is now. The judge recognized that. So I'm, what I'm advocating, and hopefully we'll have that discussion tomorrow, that they're changing their attitude. I know it's how they raise money for fundraising. The headline down in the Bay Area was, the city wants to build 1,000 six-story condos on 100 acres. That is a lie, that's the only way I can cast it. That is wrong, but it generates membership. They've got to get beyond that now, and, and really do what's right for the business community and the environment. Everyone in the, sitting in this room and in this community is an environmentalist. We're probably more green than the league members sitting down in San Francisco. Maybe we ought to form a league to save San Francisco, because their water's horrible, their air is horrible, you know, maybe we need to form a league to save Sacramento. They got problems. Maybe we outsiders need to show them how to do it. So my point is, I hope we can sit down with them, and we'll find out tomorrow if there's a change in attitude. I hope there is. It's a win-win for everybody. That's my only comment, and I hope you're wrong.
I'd like to add just a couple of comments here. First of all, Arlo should be giving Hillary Clinton lessons in statesmanship. You have done such a good job of trying to thread this needle, and it's a very, very difficult needle to thread. These meetings have been difficult, at times contentious, but for the most part, they have been very thoughtful and they have been really trying to push the process forward. I know that there's a lot of feelings and rumors that are coming from these meetings, but the truth of the matter is that the process itself really is on track, and it's on track in very positive ways. And I think that much to be commended to the TRPA, because they have managed to change significantly, not only their approach to how they did business, but most specifically their approach to this, to the regional plan update. I think that it, in large part, ha, you know, having 271 hanging over everyone's head certainly has made a timeframe much more real. On the other hand, I think that the desire to change this, our regional plan is, precedes the 271. And I'd just like to, to compliment what I think is an incredibly, incredibly difficult process. I'd like to compliment the TRPA, Arlo, and the staff for fast-tracking this and really trying to wrestle this thing to completion by the end of the year. So those are my comments. I'd like to bring up later some of the ideas that I think we need going forward. So with that, are there any other comments on the part of council? Is there, I'm opening it up to public comment. Anybody would like to speak from the audience to this issue?
Mr. Comey, if you were to speak?
Your name was on the TV set, that's why we asked.
Then I bring it back to council, and we, this is for discussion and possible direction. I would like to propose that we are very close to what are the, the sticking points, and perhaps propose that council actually have a workshop where we spend some time looking at where the, where this plan is going in detail. I know we've gotten various reports on that, but really get a sense of how council wants to proceed with this and what, what, whether, where we have consensus and where we don't. So I'd like to propose that.
I'm just real pragmatic. The way I look at this RPU right now, it's a political decision. There's one vote that can swing it one way or another, and that's a California vote. Everything we do here, trying to make sure that what we go to the governing board with is everything we want, I think is, is moot unless we, we know that the California delegation is going to stay as it is, it's not going to be changed. And I think 271 was a huge thing, because Nevada was complaining for years that a majority doesn't rule, and, but, and to, to, to adopt this RPU, we still have to go under the old voting regulations, and so for once, I see California realizing that if they don't go along with this, probably the whole thing is going to get divided in half.
You know, and-
But the workshop would be good for education. I don't think, you've guys spent so much time in this committee, we're not going to change a whole lot. I, I do appreciate the opt-
No, I, I think more of the point showing exactly where the rub is, and, and if there is a process that the city, as, as Arlo said, it becomes very evident that if there is any thwarting of this process, that it's very important that the local governments have a real clear idea, and I say specifically, the city of South Lake Tahoe, as the only jurisdiction completely within the Tahoe Basin, just exactly what, you know, are sticking points and what are not, I think are, are critical in going forward, prior to finding out, you know, prior to reacting to what California says, let's make sure that we know what we want.
What I'm, what I'm looking at it is, everything you guys have put in there, I support, and there's been a few votes that have been, whether it's density or height or a few things, those are important components to our, our why. those are important components to our Y, community plan, and I don't want to compromise them at all. So if we had a direction to you, it's, we don't want to compromise, but politically you have to make the decision. But if we have a workshop, fine, but I'm not, with Bruce, I don't feel it's a time for compromise now. We've waited long enough.
Yeah, and I agree. I have tremendous confidence in you knowing what this council and city needs. You know, we campaigned together, we've heard it on the street, our other council members have heard it, and my confidence level is very high. We all know that democracy doesn't apply here at Lake Tahoe when it comes to TRPA. Hopefully, that's changing. And the Nevada bill did change the dynamics. If that hadn't happened, we wouldn't be having this discussion, I honestly believe, today. So I think we're headed the right direction. I am very happy with you at the helm doing that. And I, the update's fine, but we're talking a March adoption here. So I don't think too much is going to change between now and end of next month, so, my opinion.
Are we talking about the report now? Is that what we're doing? Can we talk about the report? Okay.
Shall we open up the report? Is there any other comments overall, any other comments of Arlo? Arlo?
If I could just add, we're just finalizing a document that's explaining each of the dissenting votes. We'd be happy to distribute that to you, and you can get a better handle on just what the issues are that haven't passed unanimously. And procedurally, I think the plan of everyone is not to try to make compromises before this draft plan is released in late March. It's going to go forward, some of it was unanimous, some of it was five to one, there's going to be a vote to release, but more during and after the public review period is likely when those discussions will occur. So hopefully, that's helpful.
So when you had a issue, what did you call it, a dispute? The vote was five to one in each case, or in these nine areas?
Yes. The committee was initially made up of half of the governing board, seven members with equal representation kind of from each delegation. Mara Breznik resigned from the committee, so it dropped down to six. And all the unanimous vote, all the non-unanimous votes were, the California rep was the only dissenter. There have been, to date, no votes where the Nevada delegation and all of the local governments weren't on the same page.
Hillary, do you want to run us through this before Bruce asks questions, or are you comfortable with just questions?
Sure, and I can give you an update based on last week's meetings. That report didn't get into your packet. Thank you, Arlo, very much for that presentation. Just to summarize the report that was in your packet, significant actions that were taken during the meetings of January 24th and 26th was policy language to allow the subdivision of multifamily residential units in mixed-use projects. That would help us to be able to develop condominium projects that also have a mix of other uses in them. Also, policies related to Lake Tahoe Airport, policy language in the plan generally refers to an updated master plan to set standards, but they, of course, would need to be in compliance with the TRPA environmental thresholds.
Let me just give you a little update on that. One of the big sticking points here on environmental thresholds is going to be the noise. And there was an actual amount, decibel amount, that was put into the initial plan, and that has been changed to say, I've forgotten the exact wording, but essentially, we are not held to a specific number at the moment, and it will be negotiated in the airport settlement.
Right. The policy language states that the airport master plan should include specific recommendations necessary to attain the environmental thresholds. Master plan should also include implementation provisions for attaining the noise thresholds.
I picked up something in here, too. Language requiring limitations on aircraft type, number of flights per day was removed from the existing regional plan. So I go in back, same comment, it'll be negotiated in. And I sat in those negotiations 20-some years ago. They were unrealistic then, some of the noise standards, and not even acceptable with older aircraft. So it's going to be an interesting discussion.
Right. You never know with technology. Then at the meetings of January 31st and February 1st, the discussion topics were air quality and water quality, so those were quite lengthy meetings. With regard to water quality, policy language was amended to support the TMDL and the pollutant load reduction plans of each of the local jurisdictions. Also, the policy regarding the water quality mitigation fee program was expanded to allow the use of those fees not only for improvement projects, but also for activities that would benefit water quality. The, Arlo mentioned the provisions to allow for area-wide stormwater treatment systems rather than individual BMP installation were included in the policy language. Also, an implementation measure to direct TRPA to revisit the EIP program so that we can take a detailed look at that and ensure that it's accomplishing things that are aligned with the current goals, as things have evolved over the years with TMDL and also different air quality standards. The, there's also policy language to include a target date for wood stove compliance with EPA standards. That date was set as 2020. There was a lot of discussion around this in terms of enforcement, how would the TRPA enforce? But really, the policy language was written just to provide some sort of target, and an implementation measure included to direct TRPA to develop an incentive program for that wood stove replacement, not a heavy-handed enforcement program. There was a lot of discussion on Wednesday regarding a policy that was proposed to hold 50% of the air quality mitigation fees that typically the local jurisdictions collect, actually, I take that back, depending on the MOU, whoever reviews the project, whether the local jurisdiction or TRPA actually collects it. But the funds are collected from development projects where there is an increase in vehicle trips associated with what's being proposed. And then those fees are utilized within the jurisdiction that they're collected for air quality improvement projects. This proposed policy language was to hold 50% of that and put that towards regional projects that would improve water, I'm sorry, air quality. The examples of that that were brought up was the state line to state line bike path, for example, crosses multiple jurisdictions. Also, the waterborne transit crosses multiple jurisdictions. Those were examples. The local jurisdiction staff had, certainly had concerns with having 50% of their funds that they rely on to fund other programs basically taken to be used for other projects, which may also be very beneficial, but due to their local jurisdictions already having commitments for those funds, that was a concern there. So that item will be brought back to the regional plan committee on February 21st after discussion with the local government committee on February 17th. Another item that was discussed on Wednesday was some changes to the land use policies regarding the, what we're calling, area plans now. I guess there was a previous discussion that there were findings in the TRPA code that would need to be made in order to approve an area plan, but those findings or reference to those findings were not included in the actual policy language. And so now those, that policy language has been included. It's text that requires area plans to make the findings regarding achievement of environmental thresholds. So those findings are, could be interpreted as being a little beyond just a finding of consistency with the regional plan. The environmental threshold indicators are much more technical, and still unclear what the real expectation is going to be in the area plans in terms of quantifying the achievement of thresholds. So we're working with the TRPA staff to clarify that. They will be coming out with some checklists that the local jurisdictions will be able to use in order to determine whether their area plans are in line with the requirements of TRPA. The issue of drive-up windows, Commissioner Grego, Mayor Fortier brought that up in the discussion of air quality and requested that code changes be made to allow for drive-up windows in certain situations. Unfortunately, that was deemed as not within the scope of the regional plan update environmental impact statement, so it's been put on the famous to-do list and something that we'll be working with TRPA staff in the future on making those changes. Sure.
I say this to you, if there's not a footnote, at least in the regional plan, allowing for drive-up windows, I will work to oppose the plan. That's how I feel about this issue. To put it on a to-do list, there's a 40-year-old to-do list in this community. I talked to the groups that deal with disabilities and access, and they really want this concession made. And to say that it's going to be left over for a future, we have the leverage. We have the leverage this year because of 271, because the agency feels it's vulnerable. And I don't think we need to respect someone else's rules as to what can be in the plan and what can't be. Planning is a subjective, it's not a science, it's more of an art. And what we design and how we put our rules together is, has a variety of factors. And if drive-up windows are not allowed as a result of the regional plan, if there's not a footnote, I, for one, am going to oppose it.
I just want to make a comment before we answer that question. I brought this up years ago and was told by staff, so there's some political background going on that they don't want it. My point was, let science dictate this and study it. We have drive-up windows in the community we contest. McDonald's, for example, Bank of the West, B of A, and maybe a couple of more on the air quality issue. So my feeling was, and I agree with Bruce, you know, I want to see that in the regional plan update. I don't know where it got shot down, if that was on a staff level, that aggravates me. But at least give it a fair shot and let science dictate whether it works or not. My comment was, was it started from the drugstore business, that, you know, when you got the flu, or somebody's in a wheelchair, or handicapped or sick, they can drive up window. By the way, most cities mandate you have a drive-up window for new pharmacies. They require it for pharmacies. So I really want to keep that up on the radar screen and in the plan somewhere.
As a footnote, but it has to be said, the idea of waiting for future promises, it'll never happen. I only sat into one TRPA board meeting in 2009 when Hal was unavailable and I was his alternate, and I brought up the issue. Everybody looked at me like I was crazy, okay? There was no discussion, there was no desire to focus on the issue. The answer was no. Nyet. End of discussion. Then I later researched this, and I understand generations of council members that have sat on the TRPA have sought this concession. If it's not in the plan, the plan's not going to pass.
Maybe I can help with what might be a nuanced clarification. It's a timing issue. I don't think you're crazy at all. I think it makes a lot of sense, especially for pharmacies, to be able to have drive-up windows. Under the plan that's currently moving forward, the area plans that you will be developing can include drive-up windows, and that was clear on the record. The distinction here is the environmental analysis supporting that that is okay would need to be part of the area plan. I understand there's, that's not enough, and it's really an issue of timing. I wish, again, there was more time. The EIS isn't analyzing the region-wide impacts of that change, and doing so would either delay the process or would require, which is possible, some supplemental environmental analysis to be done before the plan is finalized. So it's not, it's not an issue of debating the merits of this. It's an issue of, is it important enough to do region-wide to essentially delay the process for it? Understanding that the current plan allows South Lake Tahoe and the other municipalities to permit drive-up windows in your area plans, however, the analysis, the air quality impacts of it, would basically have to be analyzed in those plans. So that's how it sits now.
When we, when we permit car washes in our community, we have cars standing in line waiting to go through the car wash. I see no difference. When this rule was made 30, 35, 40 years ago, cars polluted a heck of a lot less than they do now. More, more than, than, and, and...
So you look at it, per car less, or per car more?
And again, see, in my mind, it's not an issue of the environment and protecting the environment. In this instance, it's an issue of people's needs. People need this accommodation, regardless of what the effect is. But I assure you that if we allow it, the lake won't turn black and the skies won't be brown. It would just allow something that is needed, and as Tom said, where other communities have mandated this to happen in their communities, we have been deprived of that. It's symbolic, and it's, but it's more than that, it's also a people's need that needs to be accommodated.
No arguments on the merit of your, the case you're making here, especially for pharmacies. I think the genesis, and I'm familiar with other ordinances that regulate drive-throughs, it's more for fast food, and I think the potential air quality impacts are you get your burger and you sit idling in the parking lot eating it. That doesn't happen with pharmacies, and arguably, the impact of that with fast food may be not that significant either. So it's not, it's not an argument on the merits, it's really just a logistical timing issue, why it's not addressed more broadly under region-wide standards.
Based upon your understanding of the agency, assuming this becomes on a to-do list, when would it come up? And when would it be passed?
The procedures for the to-do list is there will be a goal and set of policies in the regional plan in the implementation element, which is what's going to be reviewed later this month. Everything that has been brought up that needs future work, which includes some major broad topics, including coverage, wholesale, reconsidering it, there's going to be a list of that, and we're going to be asking the committee to prioritize what is most critical to do soon, what can perhaps wait, because the list is longer than we can do all at once. Some of them are easy. I characterize drive-throughs as actually relatively easy in the scheme of this list. Others are bigger, like housing, modifying regulations to deal better with affordable housing, or reevaluating the coverage management system. Those are big involved efforts. The drive-through effort is much more targeted, as is a similar one dealing with signs, which I know is another important issue here. So it will be in the plan as it's currently drafted, but again, allowing it region-wide and amending the region-wide codes to allow it, it just needs some analysis, the environmental analysis that our current schedule doesn't permit without doing supplemental work after the draft.
So I guess my point was, and that's why I was suspicious, because it was shot down by staff with no discussion. I wanted it based on science. We have three or four properties now that have drive-throughs, and we are in attainment with air quality, basically. So I wanted science to dictate the decision, not a staffer. So that's why I get a little suspicious when I hear it's not going to be in there again, that it was shot down. I just wanted a fair shot at it for the community. But it is very important to our citizens, particularly in the pharmacy side, that they have some of that. So that was my point. So you're telling me, too, in the future, there'll be no other major issues coming before on the regional plan?
There's, there are, I think, two, two significant policy topics that have not been voted on, and those include signs and, slipped my mind from last week.
Drive-up windows.
And they are quality mitigation funds. And they are quality mitigation funds. Those are the two, and basically, all the chapters other than implementation have been endorsed, except for those two topics. Implementation doesn't make any new policy changes. It implements the policies from the other chapters. And then the ordinances are very important, and where we're increasingly shifting our attention of just how these policy changes get implemented in the codes. And we'll be working together with Hillary and the others to develop those ordinances over the next month. I don't know what more, well...
I'm going to pull this back for a second, because I understand your concerns, and I think that you have made them very clear to Arlo. But I want to point out a couple of things that may escape here that I'd like to emphasize. One is on the water quality issue. While the TRPA has embraced TMDLs, it's very important to note, particularly with our conversations later, that essentially, two states have very different, not different standards, very different methods of complying with what that TMDL process is. So when we talk about TMDLs, we need to understand that what TRPA has done is to put the state agencies in charge of meeting and complying with TMDL targets. And so I think that that's really important to note. I also want to also note that along with the TMDL, that Hillary had pointed out, that they're looking at the Environmental Improvement Project Program, which we've had in place for forever, which it's everything from erosion control to BMPs, is now being looked at in a more, in a bigger scale that will include, hopefully, what we are mandated to do for our TMDL changes within the city. So that's a very important difference for TRPA and one that we need to look at and note. And there was one other that I am forgetting at the moment, but I'm sure it'll come back to me. But I just wanted to make sure that those were emphasized.
And back to the to-do list, just briefly, Councilmember Grego, I share your frustration with the to-do list, and I think all the other local jurisdiction staff that has been working on this shares your frustration. I do think that the TRPA staff does recognize that there is a need for more changes. It's difficult when we all sit together, and the TRPA staff, local jurisdiction staff, all agree that something needs to be changed, but we just don't have the time right now with the deadline that TRPA is focused on to do the science that's required to evaluate the potential environmental impacts associated with some of these things.
But let me say this to you. My point of making this discussion is, it should be mentioned. It should be mentioned as an objective. It should be mentioned subject to an appropriate study. But it should be mentioned that these things that we're asking for, because I've said this before, right now, I perceive TRPA, they feel they're vulnerable. They're listening to us, not because they have a new enlightenment, but because there's a gun to their head, okay? And I feel there's a definite feeling among some at TRPA, as well as outside TRPA, is that once they pass the general plan update, they may have done enough to satisfy Nevada, and they have done enough to have SB 271 fall to the side. So they're vulnerable, they need this plan passed, and they need local government support. And with all the paper that's generated by TRPA in this plan, and the other plan, and that study, and this study, why can't there be an Exhibit A to the regional plan update that says, these are the things that we're hoping to accomplish within the next 24 months after we pass, and these are the things that we're going to try to permit, assuming that we can do it in an environmentally sensitive, responsible way? But just to ignore it and just say, well, it's on someone's list, that's going to be thrown into the round file at some point, and then we're left with nothing again. This is the year. This is the year that we either achieve justice for the people in this basin, or we see the end of TRPA. That's the choice.
My, one quick comment to what Bruce is saying. The reason 271 is there because of this frustration, that these things didn't happen, that we, as a local community, were looking for and wanted. So I agree, put it in a footnote, put it somewhere that it still stays up on their radar. We'll do the studies later. Let the science dictate it. If the science comes back and says it doesn't make sense, I'll accept that. That's how decisions should be made. Not what Tom wants, not what the environmental groups want, what science dictates good environmental policy. That's all I'm saying. I think that's what Bruce is saying. So keep it up there somewhere, put it in there somehow. We can study it later, but not 20 years.
And that's, it's also what Arlo is saying with the consideration of the implementation element that'll be coming forward to the Regional Plan Update Committee. That element will include this list of all the things that have come up through this process that, you know, if we all could turn back time, we'd like to see addressed with this regional plan update. So it will be, it will be there as part of the record.
Okay. Any other questions?
Bruce? I was reading your report with some, looking at the detail, and I wanted to talk about lighting. And I seen what happened at the Lakeview Commons, and we don't want to put large flashlights to the sky and make night look like day. But I also think that, again, we're kind of looking at this lighting issue too subjectively. If you had a choice between walking into a lit room or a dark room, what would you choose? When I argue with someone on a political thing, I hope I can show them the light. I don't say I hope to show you the dark, okay? Well, I think there needs to be more discussion about what is public safety issues. I'm very concerned that as a result of our sign ordinance, implementation that'll be implemented over the next couple of years, the idea of trying to prevent light pollution, to use a term in the report, that we're losing sight of what we, why we would like to have light. You know, as a practicing attorney, you read about cases where someone is assaulted in a parking lot, and they sue the property owner, or they sue the landlord because there's not enough light in the parking lot, and it allows criminal elements to take advantage of that, okay? I drive up and down Highway 50, and I see people on bicycles that have no lights or a minimum light that is hard to see until you're on top of them because there's not enough of light. And I think that for those people that want to see everything dark, I like to talk to them. Have them come here and convince me that at night, we should not see any light, because that is my reading of this, in that they are trying to reduce the impact of lighting to the point where the skies don't see any light. Well, again, light has been part of mankind since the beginning of time. We use it to light up the night. And I think we're being too subjective and too restrictive in this area to really meet the public safety issues, because what's being discussed here is to provide minimum necessary to provide public safety along pedestrian and bike corridors. It's a hell of a lot more than that. It's for protecting our community from crime, to provide an inviting atmosphere for our tourists coming up. How many compliments have we received because we lit up a tree at the Y? People like seeing those things. We're comfortable with light. For those that want to live in darkness, I don't know what to say to them. But I think we're looking at this issue too narrowly, and I'm afraid that by being so concerned about, quote, "light pollution" and how it might affect the sky, we might be impacting real needs that are met by proper lighting at night.
Just another comment on that, too, because that's been one of my big issues for many years. A well-lit community is a safe community, and whether it's on Highway 50 or in our residential areas, it's really critical. I still don't know to this very day what lighting pollution is. I have no idea. You know, I like outdoor lighting, and I was real frustrated, and this is a good example, at Lakeview Commons, we had, I thought was good adequate lighting, you know, there, and then TRPA, at the last minute, changed their mind, cost us $71,000 to go back. I haven't walked it yet. I've seen it from the street. I'm not sure that's adequate lighting now. That is a concern. And unfortunately, in this town now, what they've done is our business sign lighting is our street lighting. That is not what we want. If you go down a highway when there's a power outage, and you don't see the business signs out there, it's pitch black. So I think it's really critical. Ski runs, another good example. You go from light to dark, light to dark. I can't see it. You go down through Carson City, down the main drag in front of the Capitol, you can see everything, and you can walk on the sidewalk. So I want to keep focusing on that. And that's why we put it back in, to make sure we have adequate lighting for our community, particularly pedestrians and Highway 50. Now, I understand we're only going to have it on the mountainside, on the curbs and sidewalks, because they don't want to see it from the lake. Well, you're going to see it from the lake on the mountainside anyway, along Highway 50. So I don't understand the rationale.
The question is, how many people are protesting to see light from the lake? And should those, that particular narrow group dictate this issue for our city? Again, there's also the commercial aspects. People come up, they don't want to come up to a dark town.
Rather than debating all the inferences of light, why don't we look at...
I'm just trying to show the light.
There you go. And frankly, it was illuminating.
You asked for comments. You got them.
However, I would know what I'm trying to say, before we get too far off on this, I think it's duly noted that the lighting issue is something that is of great concern. And during the code process, which Hillary is part of, that is something that will be taken up at great length.
Right. I was going to mention that, you know, this is an issue that not just South Lake Tahoe or Lake Tahoe deals with. This is something that's dealt with all over the world. The policy language that has been advanced by the Regional Plan Update Committee, I think, is adequate. I think we can accomplish adequate lighting in our community, but also design it well so that we are minimizing light pollution impacts. And I can do an entire workshop on light pollution if you need to. But it really is the devil's in the details, and it really is the code. And when you get those detailed standards that stymie you from being able to have creative designs that do meet both purposes. So I don't see that what's been advanced so far is a major hindrance for the city of South Lake Tahoe, and it is one of those areas where we can bring forward different standards as part of an area plan, if what winds up in the TRPA code isn't acceptable to us. So we still have a lot of avenues to work on this topic.
Just one last comment. What you've seen here today is, for the first time, we think we have an input into the process, which we haven't had before. So that's why it's, I think it's so important to make these points and comments that we have. I'm encouraged by it. That's the last comment I'm going to make.
You know, I know that the TRPA representative is only a conduit for information here, and that my comments are not directed to you individually. It's directed at the TRPA. Well, I don't know if he knows that.
Is there any other specifics in the update that you'd like to go through?
Yeah, six more.
Okay. So enough of that.
I have a few comments.
I would like to absolutely applaud Hillary, who has been a real trooper in all of this and has been a real leader for the community in getting all your requests translated into action. So thank you, and thank you, Arlo. Are there any public comments on the TRPA regional plan review, lighting in particular? Okay, good enough. Seeing none, then I will, I gather we don't want, we'll just continue getting updates as opposed to a workshop? Okay, good enough, all right?
When we talk about workshop, yes, we're talking about workshop, I think we should allow like an entire afternoon, because right now, I'm fatigued, and I couldn't say everything I wanted to say. And so please give it adequate time and not fill us up with other things that would be distracting.
We're talking about not having a workshop.
At the moment, we're looking at not having...
We're way beyond the process now.
Personally, I don't know what it would accomplish. I think, right now, the RFU is trying to get to the governing board, and it's going to be a chore to get it there intact as it is. We have a lot of input, but I don't know what a workshop would accomplish.
Agreed.
What I had proposed is that at your next meeting, which is February 21st, we will be very close to the end of the Regional Plan Update Committee process, and then it'll be moving on to the governing board, that at that point, we put together perhaps a draft letter, a list, something that expresses areas of change that the city of South Lake Tahoe supports in the regional plan update. And if there are areas of change that the council would like to put focus on that were not taken up as part of the regional plan update, then, you know, we can put that together in a letter so that the council is able to express those areas of support and concern for the governing board. And, you know, again, as Arlo mentioned, there'll be opportunities for comment during the draft, public comment period, and that's when we could refine those a little bit more as we take those forward. That's just a proposal, if the council would like...
I think it's an excellent proposal. I would say that maybe we do it, maybe the first meeting in March, and the reason being is there still needs to go through the implementation, and there's a couple of other little, not little, a couple of other big nexuses that need to be reached. So perhaps just putting it off a little bit might be helpful.
Okay.
Okay. No other comments? Good enough. Moving right along then. All right. Oh, thank you, Arlo. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. Under new business, the ordinance of the city of South Lake Tahoe, city council amending Chapter 1, general provisions, adding Article 3, administration citation. So we are going to hear Bob on this one.
Maybe before Mr. Abatazi starts, I've got a revised draft from what's in your packet there. We've made a few changes. We've belished a few sections. So I'm going to pass that out to you, and we'll talk about it in the staff report, as well as I have some for the audience.
Is this something that we want to change the timing on? Do we want to take another?
No.
Okay.
No.
Okay, so shall we let Bob go ahead?
And I think, Madam Mayor and Council, I think I'll address those. I think they're minor. On the 21st of January, we came before council proposing administrative citation process to assist us in our effort of code enforcement and to clean up the city. At that time, council generally, I believe, accepted the concept. However, there were a couple of issues that they asked staff to look at. And one of those issues, I believe, if you could look in Section 1-29, concerned the, what we were charging for a late fee. We had proposed charging 25% per 30 days, and that appeared to be excessive. We went back and looked at that. So we have changed that just to be a flat rate of 25% per the fine. The second significant change was the appeal process, and you'll find that in Section 1-32. We had initially proposed an appeal and then a hearing, and council expressed their desires to ensure that citizens would have the opportunity to appeal to council anytime during this process. So we have included that in Section 1-32, indicating that the council could hear appeals concerning the admin citation process. The other minor change that we made in there was, I believe it was, we gave council 20 days to advise the individual if they would hear it. We've changed that to 45 days, giving the council more time to evaluate whatever type of appeals did in fact come before them. So, sir, I don't know if you had any other significant changes. Those were the two major changes, I believe.
And that was a change I made. I did that in light of the fact that some months we only meet once a month, so I wanted to make sure the council had enough time. The way envisioning this happening is, the council, during council comments, if a council member wanted to hear it, could at that time request that the council schedule the matter. member wanted to hear it, could at that time request that the council schedule the matter. And if he or she gets a consensus-
What I'd like to ask is, all of the changes you've outlined here are in, are in what I've been able to read before. What changes did you make that you just handed out? I can't readily see them, so I-
Forty-five day.
They're red?
Well, they're in bold. They're, they're actually in bold. 1-25, the hearing officer.
Oh, so if it's in bold. So there's, there's some significant changes in.
Well, just two sections.
Two sections. Okay. Because Mr. Abertazi was explaining changes there in here.
Right.
And I understand them. What I don't understand is what was just handed to me, what is different from what you're working off of there.
1-25, I inserted some language. I think we had a discussion last time as to who the hearing officer would be. And here it makes it, yeah, makes it clear, may or may not be an employee of the city. We also added language. As a case, of course, the hearing officer has to be fair and impartial. So there are cases saying that his compensation or benefits or payment cannot depend on what his decision is.
I see it now. I can see the bold I hear from there.
And the other section I primarily embellished on was 1-27, the service procedures, to more specifically state what happens in the case that we are not able to serve him personally or through certified mail.
Perhaps you can clarify something, and I'm sure it's right in here correctly. But one of the issues that we had in a case recently was how to serve notice. And one of the things that was brought up was this particular person was out of the country. What I read in here is that the same process is true. It's still by certified letter. And if that letter doesn't reach the business or homeowner, then it's still permissible to have a posted sign on the property itself. In other words, we're not going to try to track down each person in person. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am. That is correct.
Well, like, you know, we learned from that experience last time. And this is a judicial process, is it not? I just think it's critical we make personal contact with them somehow, some way. Or at least every effort that we know that they're out of, they don't care anymore, or maybe they don't want to attend, but.
But the issue is, if they refuse service, or they refuse to take their mail, then there's no way that we can serve them. And so what the law provides in cases like this is what I've inserted in Section D there, is that we could then publish the notice once a week for two consecutive weeks in a local paper. I mean, maybe there's a better way to try to actuate that. But that would be in the event that somebody is refusing personal service.
Understand that. But if I'm out of the country, and you mail it to me and it comes back unsigned, or you post it on my house, I don't get it. That's my concern. We saw that happen. And maybe not as critical on this, but it's sure critical on abatement side of it, whether it's a physical address. I just want to keep that in mind. That I think it's just good government policy. We go above and beyond, you know, the call of duty to make sure we notify them.
We tried to address it as best we can. I mean, the other provision is in B, the second paragraph, says if the enforcement officer's reasonable investigation reveals a different home or business address, then he shall send a copy to that address. So make it clear that the enforcement officer is responsible to do a due diligence search for the individual. And if we get word or through standard investigation realize he's not at that address and we need to send it somewhere else, then we need to.
Yeah, I understand. This is a little different situation than, than abatement at the house. This is someone appealing a license. So they're more apt to be here or follow up and follow through to see when the pellet or the hearing's going to be. So.
We have an issues. We've got a lot of second homes. We've got businesses that shut down for a month or two during the slow seasons. So, yeah.
This policy covers abatements as well. I mean, this is a overall policy on the part of the city, correct?
Yes, ma'am. What this is, when we talk about covering, this is the initial, the initial action, finding an individual.
Okay. Because I, you know.
Well, then if, I'm sorry, I thought it was for the blue go appeals. But if that's the case, then, you know, before an abatement happens, I think this council needs to be notified. A property abatement, I'm talking about. Because I had a case years ago, and hell, you were on the council of the guy's Volkswagen. He was over in Europe, remember that? We took his VW, which he thought it was a classic car. We crushed it. We ended up paying him because we lost in court. I just want to make sure, as good government, we do everything possible to notify that person. It may be a case where, hey, I know the guy and I know where he is. I'll call him for you. But I don't want to bait somebody's property unless we've actually notified him personally.
Yes, sir. I understand your, your consideration. It's difficult for me to respond to that. Because when we, how do I want to put this? The reasonable test, you know, we had this one situation that we're referring to that occurred at the last council meeting. You know, I would argue that we, that went on for two years. The individual has some responsibility in that case also. However, when we make it a policy to personally contact each property owner that we are going to abate their property, I believe we're talking about an unreasonable standard.
I don't agree. And let me tell you why. This is people's personal property we're seizing and destroying. I got a problem with that unless they know. Now, in that one case, it did take a couple of years, but not once. This was an abatement. We had given them notice after notice. This was an actual abatement order. That's different than talking to the property owner for two or three years. This was an action item. So I disagree with you, Bob. It's so important that we get a hold of, as somebody said, one man's junk is another man's treasure. And in this case, it was really true. So I just think we need to do everything possible to notify them before we take their property.
Sir. And if that's the policy, we will abide by that.
I'm sorry. Bruce, go ahead.
Being mayor, you have to talk last.
Yeah, I know.
Several comments. First of all, I was really happy to see that you extended some of the times, because that was one of my concerns, that the timeframes on a lot of these matters, much too short for people to react. I'm not only talking about the 45 days for the council, but there's stuff like, you know, 10-day deadlines, 15-day deadlines. I think those are rather short, only because I don't think the city has the capability of reacting faster if, if someone that's cited for something makes contact and is waiting for a response. I, and so I think some of the time streams should be extended further in almost every category here, at least by 10 days. Because I think 10-day notices and 15-day notices, heck, some people probably don't pick up their mail for two weeks. And, and P.O. boxes. I just think it's too short a time. But, but there's bigger issues too. And I have a question for the city attorney. For years, when people came to me and they had a problem with the city and it was a small matter, I said sue them in small claims court. And they did. Then there was a law that was passed by the legislature saying that people couldn't use small claims court to sue municipalities. And that law came into effect less than 10 years ago, eight years ago. And you have a reference in here that small claims court could be used regarding this ordinance on 1-33. And I'm wondering whether that is legal or not. And maybe the law's been changed again. But I remember that, that, that came down and was passed prohibiting people from suing municipalities in small claims. They forced them to go to the bigger courts. And so I just bring it up to you that that's a concern I have. The other, the broader concerns are this, and since Bob is here, I want to ask this question. As an illustration only, someone's growing marijuana in a residence. They haven't got our permits. They haven't complied with our ordinances. I believe the ordinances we passed allow us to assess them $1,000 a day, up to $1,000 a day for not complying. I think that's a fair summary of what that required. How does the passage of this law change our enforcement rights regarding the example I just gave you?
What this gives us, sir, is the ability to take the matter and address it administratively versus criminally. Right now, the only way we could process that violation would be if they were issued a notice to appear and to appear in criminal court.
So in other words, the ordinance that we passed regarding marijuana cultivation in residences, that has a $1,000 assessment for not getting a permit, that's not a civil assessment? That's a criminal assessment somehow?
My, my understanding, sir, is the only way that that can be quote prosecuted, if you wanted to issue them a citation. The only citation available is the notice to appear, which is you would appear in court before a judge. And that was one of the reasons. That's one good example. But many of the examples that we looked at in implementing this administrative citation, because the criminal courts don't want to hear those quote minor issues.
I'm asking the city attorney, do you agree?
Yeah.
I agree. And that's why we do it administratively. So we do it in the city versus through the courts.
I could also add, I'm sorry for the interruption. I could also add a little bit of information on that. Neera and I've had some discussions relative to the marijuana issue in enforcement. And we were working on crafting a letter that would specifically initiate absent of the citation, or the administrative citation in the interim. But our hopes were that we would be able to use the administrative citation as the mechanism for assessing the civil violations relative to marijuana.
Right. I understand.
As far as the small claims, I think there was a law that was passed that limits the ability to sue the cities in small claims. But you can still sue the city for minor breach of contracts and minor, if it's strictly a monetary issue.
Again, I don't remember the specifics anymore. It's a bit too long.
And in this, we specifically limit it to the small claims court is just to hear what the actual fine and the late fees are to be paid, not whether or not there was actually a nuisance. If it was a nuisance, or the citation was valid or not, then that would have to be through the superior court. So.
The other question I have is, attached to this proposed ordinance is a, a sample of an administrative citation ticket.
Yes, sir.
Can I assume that only these items are listed on the ticket? Are the items that this law is going to apply to?
No, sir.
Okay.
It applies to the entire city code.
All right. Then I suggest we see how this works and that we add a provision in this ordinance as to the items that it can first apply to. And let's see how it works before just saying it can apply to everything. Because I don't know what everything is. And, and I don't know whether some of the mechanisms are in place for other things other than on this list, have procedures that maybe are more judicious, more favorable, more favorable or more workable for those kinds of violations. I'm just saying is, to pass this and just say applies to everything, seems rather broad at this point, because I don't know how this is going to work. My comments.
And I would, I would submit, sir, that rather than limit it, because we don't know exactly what we're going to be able to address with these administrative citations, I would like to see it more broadly applied. And if we have to limit it in the future, due to what we encounter, that we do it at that time, versus limiting ourselves at this time.
Assuming that this goes for first reading today, can I have a list of all the things that this would apply to for the next, next time we have a council meeting, as to how the citation process will apply to all these other areas? In other words, right now, according to the citation, you have it for abandoned vehicles, and you have it for graffiti, and you have it for sign and advertising, and you have it for vacation, home rentals. What other categories that are not on this list that this will apply to, I'd like to know?
Yes, sir. And it would be the entire code. For example, taxi, our taxi ordinance. If a driver is stopped and he does not have his taxi operator's license as required by the code, this is what would be utilized to, to address that issue, would be this administrative citation. Not having adequate dumpster capabilities.
Why don't we, is this?
When I fast on the question though, does this then, does this ordinance then supersede what we've had in procedures before? Or does it run along with them? In other words, we have procedures in place in dealing with taxi drivers and, and other things. Does this ordinance then supersede what we've have and those other ordinances have no force effect?
It's just, the violations there, this just tells how this, how we administer them, is all this does. The way I read this, the code for taxis is there, but this administrative citation is, is how we're going to enforce that.
The reason I ask that was because, right now, if someone's violating some kind of city ordinance, there's procedures for hearings. We've gone over this. The procedures that we just went through with the guy that came last time with all the notices and everything else, will those, that particular ordinance now be null and void?
No, sir. No, sir.
But the goal is to make the hearing process, the administrative process, as uniform as possible. Instead of having a different process depending on whether it's a taxicab or abatement of a building, or whatever the case may be, that we have a uniform process that we follow as much as possible.
And we did address your concern about the council can't hear any of these administrative citations. I just had a comment and then a grammatical correction. I'm so big on grammar. I'm, I'm not real comfortable in an ordinance to specify how or the criteria somebody gets paid. That is really to be done outside of this. And so I think the hearing officer, I'm referring to 125 under definitions where our city attorney has added, the hearing officer may but not be an employee of the city. Fine. But then to go on to say, the employment performance evaluation, compensation and benefits, if any, shall be directly, indirectly conditioned upon the number of citations, the amount of fines. I think that's really going way too much detail.
Wait, wait a minute. There's a typo. It should be, shall not be directly or indirectly.
Oh, that's quite a, quite a typo.
[laughter]
All right. But I mean, even then, it's, it's really, I don't know if it needs to be part of our code. I mean, that, that should be part of how we implement it when we hire people and stuff. But, okay, that makes me feel more comfortable. And the other grammatical is 127B, you don't, you're not consistent in your tense, if the violation consists, it's either the violations consist or violation consists, plural. That's all. I would imagine it's supposed to be if the violation consists of a condition.
That's why I like to get these early.
So, but, so other than the grammatical error, I, if you want to put that in not fine, but I would be comfortable if it's just, we just say the employee need not be an employee of the city. And then how his employment contract is written is really something to be done, maybe modified individually as whoever we hire and how our city manager wants to do it. So that's the only, otherwise, I think this is really good to have a uniform way of citations are issued and how they appeal them. And I think this, this is going to help us a lot in enforcement and how, how we have to get in involved or not involved.
Sir. I echo what you have said. And I just want to point out here that one of the things that we as a council looked at early on was the code, how we dealt with violations of code. And the, I thought, input from council was that this was a focus of ours, that we were now going to try to have, implement a consistent policy. And that in doing so, we were going to back, if you will, what is our city code. And we weren't going to micromanage the process. And I'm saying this because I feel one of the things that we are doing here, I do understand the abatement issue, and I can see we're destroying someone's property is certainly a difficult proposition. On the other hand, we've got some real problems in this city in terms of code violation. And I feel like we need to, to essentially have the backbone to put this in place and then, you know, see where the chips fall from there. The only other thing I would add is that you say there's only one 25% fine assessment, and that there is no, there are no timetable. There is no increase in that fine assessment. I would just like to propose that if we are finding a lot of people who aren't ignoring that process, that we reconsider whether we want to have a timetable that increases the percentage of that fine.
Yes, ma'am. And could I just ask one question as we go back? And could I just ask one question as we go back? In general, increase the timeframes by 10 days? Mr. Gregor had recommended that. No, I, I just, I will do that. I just wanted to make sure I'm clear on that. Right. No, we will, we will implement, implement that.
I can't find where I read it, but there's a provision for, oh, here it is. Well, no, I don't, that's not it either. A waiver of fees? What section is that?
It's in the hearing. It is 1-30. It's called an advanced deposit hardship waiver.
Okay. Let's talk about this for a little bit. I'd like to see that narrowed as to who can exercise that. Give you an example, the dispensaries are all these nonprofit entities. And if they are cited, do they get to get a waiver because they're nonprofit? I think we need to be more specific here. It should be only individuals that have, you know, an economic situation where they can't find the hundred dollars, or they, they meet certain criteria like they do for a court matter on a waiver of fees. But I don't want to see this issue come up with nonprofit entities. Yeah, I know they are. But, give, give you an example, some time ago, the lead to Save Lake Tahoe put a sign up, and they didn't get a permit. And then, they did get a permit after the city complained to them. And then they asked if their fees could be waived because they were nonprofit. And we said, "No," okay? But I don't want the opportunity to arise here that some of these quote nonprofit entities that are very profitable, somehow because of that status alone, gets them a waiver of fees because I think that's an abuse of the process. So if we could have maybe more specificity as to who can qualify for a waiver, I think I'd feel more comfortable.
Would we want to make, make it a part of the ordinance, sir, or a part of the policy? Because what we're looking at right now, anyone who has to apply for one of these hardship waivers basically is an extensive process, the forms, what they have to provide. And I guess my recommendation would be to make that, that specificity that you're asking for in the policy versus the ordinance.
Question. Do we have a policy, or do we have a regulation regarding waiver of fees in general in the city? Is that what you're saying?
No, what I'm saying is, we have a provision for them to apply for a hardship waiver. What you're not, I'm sorry.
But what's the criteria for that?
And that's what I am suggesting to be policy, the forms that'll be used, what you have to submit to qualify for a hardship waiver.
Well, are those criteria?
We're working on that now. For example, what is your income? What do you have to provide? Do you have to provide your W-2 form? And we're working, working on that right now. Exactly, the specifics of the, you know, of the application, if you will.
Okay, well.
And I can, I can bring that in, you know.
I would like to see that.
Yes, sir.
Again, I would like to emphasize, though, I would not like to see a waiver just simply because an entity comes in that has a nonprofit status. That should not be an automatic waiver because of their status.
No, sir, I, I shouldn't say this before this body, it's going to be very difficult to get a hardship waiver.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments from council? Then I would like to open this up to the public. Does anybody want to comment on this matter? Seeing no comment, I bring it back to council.
I want to just piggyback what Claire said about the 25%. Last time, it was 25% a minute or something. It was like, it was like really too much. Now we went to the other end, it's 25% only. Why shouldn't we get 25% annually? You know, back 30 days, 25%. And then if this thing is still being debated a year from now, they get another 25%. I was against 25% per month. That was, this seems so excessive. That's all, my feeling on that.
The reason that we didn't go any further with that is the process for these citations, they're going to be processed by an independent agency. They're not going to be processed by the city, somewhat similar to our parking citations. So if the individual does not pay within a year, they're going to be taking action with regard to collections, with regard to the state franchise tax board, and things of that nature. So that's why we felt that the 25% would be adequate to take care of the processing fees that we have to go through. Yes, sir.
It also states that if you don't pay it, you'll lose all your licenses with the city, and other things will happen. So there's more hammer than just the 25%.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other comment?
No, I'd make a motion, but I want to incorporate the suggestions that we've made. I still would suggest that we end 125, that the part that's in bold at the, "Officer may but not be employee of City of Lake Tahoe, period." And then, under our policy, we'll deal with how, how we pay them. And then I'd like the grammatical error corrected in 127. But was there anything else that we want to incorporate before I make a motion?
We have these other other service procedures.
Extending the times on the, on, you know, increasing the times by at least 10 days to give more time for all these things to work, like the.
Well, I want to be clear so that the city clerk can, can get this, so.
Could we not have another first reading and have this continued, have staff work all the comments in?
This is, we did this once before, I guess we can.
I know, but we're getting closer.
This is government at work, so.
It's, my other comment was, how do we roll into this that they notify, particularly on an abatement, I'm concerned about, that we physically notify the owner? How do we do that?
I think we should put a provision in there that says, if it's just merely a fine for violating something, maybe the standard should be different, but if, when there's a loss of personal or real property, that a higher standard of notification should be developed.
You're an attorney, but as you know, service, whether it's a criminal, whether it's, there is procedures for service. And what I want to avoid is people who are avoiding service purposely, that, that they can send us forever. Are we, are we out of line with any other service that's been done by, when you hire a server or the court hires somebody?
Compared to what would be required for court service to some extent. My concern too is like, in the publication, which the courts have always got the.
Why don't we direct staff to bring this back to us at our next meeting?
Intent, so.
I guess the intent, we're still, sure, I'm comfortable with the service issue. I really feel.
I am comfortable with the service issue.
And so, two of us aren't, so maybe we'll have to wait until Angela gets here.
So we can, we can discuss that further, but let's have staff bring this back. Okay? All right? All right. Next item we'll know, I think we have, is, is there someone, or is there members of the audience that want to speak to the parking meter issue? Okay, they are here, they've been here. So I would like to take that one before we adjourn for lunch, so.
Are they here also for the business license tax issue? No, okay.
All right, so, B, ordinance of the City of South Lake Tahoe, City Council amending city code, Chapter 16, Article blah, 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 parking meters, section la, la, la. Anyway, the whole thing is regarding designations of parking meters adding Reagan Beach, State Line Beach, Venice Drive between Tahoe Keys Boulevard and Tahoe Keys Marina, and Saddle Road between Ski Run Boulevard and Wildwood as parking meter zones. So first, we'll take the staff report.
Sir and Madam Mayor, Council Bob Albert Housie again, South Lake Tahoe Police Department. In the way of some quick background, the police department was given the responsibility to manage the parking enforcement program for the City of South Lake Taco, excuse me, of Tahoe in June of 2011. And I guess it's time for lunch, you're right. The first chart shows the results of the police department's enforcement efforts. What, what we have done is made parking enforcement throughout the city more consistent than it had been in the past, and secondly, focused on the disabled parking space areas. So you can see by the chart, there have been some significant increases in the enforcement of the disabled parking area. When the police department was given the direction to take on parking enforcement, we were also asked to develop or look into a parking management program that would be self-sustaining and that would include paid parking. As a result of this, we entered into a pilot program beginning in July, excuse me, of 2011. At Transit and Bellamy Way, where we instituted paid parking. We had 18 spaces and three parking kiosks. They taught me a little better with my charts this time. This next chart is your, what the revenue expenses have been from July through December. And as you can see, as far as a parking management program, it has been successful based on the revenue and the expenses. In the blue, excuse me, graph there is paid parking, and that's primarily, again, just those 18 parking spaces at Transit and Bellamy. Because of the success of the program, we.
Revenue's way high, could you go back to that chart, explain to me what the revenue is?
Yes, sir. The, any specific or just in general?
Well, all of them across the board, like October, revenue was way up, but the parking, paid parking was down, is that citations?
No, total revenue is citations plus paid parking. So, as you can see, in October, paid parking would be down because you have the limited number of tourists, it, it's going to fluctuate. It's, paid parking over this six-month period has averaged about $3,000 per month.
But the green spikes way over $30,000 in October, is that other violations like handicap parking spots?
Yes, sir, I'm sorry, that's all violations. The green represents all violations.
All right, thank you.
Revenue, counter for all violations. As I said, the next phase that we wanted to look at is, where could we implement more paid parking for the City of South Lake Tahoe? We identified over 400 spaces throughout the city. And what we came up with, we were recommending the, the areas of State Line Beach, Reagan Beach, Venice Drive, and a small area up on Saddle Road to just see what it would be like during the winter months as far as paid parking. In looking at the paid parking areas, we, well, let me go to the fourth one. The impact of what we are proposing is, potential revenue is a positive impact. From paid parking, if we implemented these additional 300 paid parking spaces, we're projecting a revenue of some $350,000. How did we come up with that? It's basically what we looked at was the number of spaces times a dollar fifty per hour rate. And again, this was just a, a projection. We looked at 100 days in the beach area of capacity. We would have paid parking May through September and into October. But again, to be conservative, you would probably only have capacity of eight hours a day for 100 days. And this gave us a total of approximately $318,000 of potential revenue for the city. For the paid parking spaces up on Saddle, it's minimal. It's about $4,200, only looking at 30 days in that area, because that's overflow parking from heavenly. What you're looking at is the Christmas, New Year timeframe, the, and then the President's Day and Martin Luther, Luther King weekends. So only looking at it realistically, 30, 30 days per year. And then we would continue with our current spaces down at Transit and Bellamy, and that totaled, in the neighborhood of about $350,000. The, what would be required would be to purchase an additional three, excuse me, additional 30 parking kiosks. We went out, went RFP, we got the bids back, and we'll be coming back to council with that. But the total cost for these 30, additional 30, would be in the neighborhood of about $260,000. And what staff is looking at doing is amortizing that over a five-year period, so we would not have that one-time cost. And what we have done, when we implemented our paid parking program back in June, we budgeted for a lease program for 2011, 2012. So we have approximately $50,000 budgeted for the lease of these, of these new parking kiosks. Some of the negative impact that we are projecting is local citizens having to pay for parking at Reagan Beach and at State Line Beach, excuse me, on Venice. Where, you know, we've said before, we're in, we're in a new era. And if we're looking at attempting to generate revenue for the city, this is something that the citizens would have to cooperate with. But I do expect some negative feedback and negative comments concerning this. And then finally, what, what we would anticipate is overflow parking in the residential areas surrounding some of these beach areas, such as Reagan Beach and State Line Beach. And we would propose to mitigate this overflow parking in residential areas, implementing a permit program for our local residents, where they would be issued permits to park on the street, so we could identify their cars, and then anyone else would be cited parking in these areas. So as, a quick rundown of what we're looking at is to implement paid parking in these areas and to generate some potential revenue for the city.
Couple of questions. How, how do we justify, at State Line Beach, for example, that's a private beach. How do we justify paid parking to go onto a private beach?
The street belongs to the city.
I understand that, but it's, the beach is private, though. I can understand Reagan Beach and Lakeview Commons, it's a public facility. The other question I had is, in this area at State Line, there's vacation rentals there. Would they be able to get a permit when folks come and park there on the street?
We would have no permits for parking in the paid parking area.
Okay.
So anyone who parked there would.
And then, are we also talking Lakeview Commons? I didn't see that on here.
No, sir, we're not, that's the Eldorado Beach area, we had looked at that. And what we found out, that the grant money that was provided for that project did not allow paid parking.
That was Boating Waterways grant money?
Yes, sir, I believe that's what it was.
So doesn't it allow us to charge for, does allow us to charge for boat launching, though?
Yes, it does, and, and.
But not parking?
But not strictly parking.
And then the parking lot we bought in the back was with that same grant money, where the old motel was too, correct?
I believe so, yes, sir. I was told that.
No, it wasn't bought with Boating Waterways money, it was bought for redevelopment.
We're talking where the motel used to be? So we could charge there if we wanted to?
I don't know about Boating Waterways, but that was not acquired with the grant money from Boating Waterways.
I would have to check into that again, sir, because I was told that the Eldorado Beach area, and it was because of the Boat and Waterways grant, so I will check into that.
There's parking right around that restroom that was paid for by Boat and Waterways. That, that little parcel is restricted. I don't know how they could restrict a parcel that had nothing to do with it, right?
Way in the back there.
Yeah.
That's, that's great, sir, that's more, more potential.
I think that the, the property was purchased with grant monies from the CTC, but then the parking lot was constructed with funds from Boating and Waterways, is my understanding.
Where the motel is?
Was.
Was?
Right, where the trailer parking is now, on the west side of Harris.
Okay, so it wasn't purchased with money, but the improvements were paid for by Boat and Waterways?
Have you finished your presentation?
Yes, ma'am, any questions?
Any other questions from council?
16.115, this is green metered spaces. When you have a green curb marking, does that mean you don't have to pay the, the meter because you're going to be there for less than 15 minutes? Is that what's intended by this? I just don't understand the comment. I mean, I don't understand the provision.
No, sir, I believe the, what that means is, it identifies the area as a metered space. And I will, I will look into that just to make sure.
Let me ask you this, and it says parking for no longer than 15 minutes. It might take, it could take me at least maybe 15 minutes just to figure out how to use the machine to get the little coupon to put back in the car.
We would.
You know, that's right, that's right. And so I just, I was just wondering how that applies. Then, again, I thought I read this, is it going to be exemptions for local residents?
No, sir.
Okay.
If there are no other clarifying questions, I'd like to open this up to the public. Do we have some folks who'd like to speak on this issue? we have some folks who'd like to speak on this issue? I, my screen's-
Mayor and council members, my name is Jay Keneep. I'm here for the Lakeside Park Association, which has some of the same questions that Mr. Davis has. We understand that you have a budget that you need to balance, but they have a budget that they need to balance too. And they have a beach that they need to maintain, and they have some commercial activity on that beach that they use to generate the income to maintain their beach. And when you make access to those facilities more difficult for the public and the paying guests, you're affecting their budget. And I think it's important that the city think about the other local interests that are affected by things like creating paid parking. For example, on Venice Boulevard, or Venice Drive, there are three other parking lots that if you create a need to pay on Venice, guess where those people are gonna go. And now, three other organizations have an enforcement problem, or they have to do some policing, or they have to do ticketing, or they have to create passes, or do something in response to what you've done. I think it's really important that there be some community involvement before you start doing things like this. I'm here, and the other folks from Lakeside Park are here, only because I happened to look at your agenda last Friday and see that parking meters at Lakeside Beach were on your agenda. You would think that the people directly affected by such a decision would be involved with the decision-making, and perhaps involved with creating the plan so that you'd have something that everybody could support, instead of having fear and panic over the weekend going, they're gonna take away our parking, our beach is gonna be unviable, how are we gonna meet our budget? What's gonna happen? It's gonna be horrible. So, what I'm here to ask you to do is to take a step back, talk to the people that are gonna be affected by this, that are gonna have to live with whatever you come up with twenty-four hours a day, three hundred and sixty-five days a year, because it's in their neighborhood. And have them give you some input about how this might work, how you might be able to generate the revenue that you need, and that it could work to make their neighborhood a place they can live, and they can balance their budget. Thank you.
Question for you, Jay. The, my question before was, the property that you own goes to the chain leak fence?
It's a wrought iron fence, yeah.
Wrought iron fence?
Right.
So, the property in front of the wrought iron fence is city property, not association property?
I believe, I believe it was at one time association property, but it was heated to the city, and so now it's city property, yes.
Okay. Ask you how the ski rental business is going this winter.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, thank you for the opportunity to be here. My name is Bob Hassett. I'm the owner of Lakeside Marina, as well as a Fresh Catch Restaurant. First thing I'd like to say is, I have to commend Bob for doing a good job with the enforcing parking. I do think that's a good thing for the city, gets people with a consistency enforced there. It helps everyone out, I think, for a number of different things. One of my biggest concerns here is something Jay hit upon, and that was the fact of, there was no, no notifications regarding this, and it was very concerning over the weekend. You know, on Friday, I made a call to a number of different people that would be affected by this, and everyone was like, what is going on? You know, so there's a lack of communication, which is a major concern here with regards to this issue specifically. I do know the city has a policy, when businesses have to make changes that are gonna affect locals, residents, nearby neighbors, you have to give notice, you have to send it out to them in the mail, give them a chance to respond. I believe it's a thirty-day period. So, I would ask that the city have a similar responsibility to people that are gonna be affected, whether it's residences or business that are affected by different policy changes First, I was gonna come here and say that I, I really am not sure, I understand the city has a, you know, budget, has a challenge here, and we're all affected by that, just like businesses have budgets that we have to keep and try to figure out how to make it make sense. So, I can really appreciate staff's need to try to fill some of those voids. At the same time, I do have a concern when there's gonna be, this same challenge is passed on to the business. All of a sudden, it's driving people away, business drops off, employees get laid off, et cetera, et cetera, and you know that whole scenario, how it, how it works. So, there's a concern here when, we've kept many of our rates, specifically at the marinas, we've tried to keep our costs down, we haven't raised rates in four years, and all of a sudden, now, rates, in essence, are gonna be raised for our guests, guests, locals, as well as out-of-towners coming here, and those rates are gonna go up, increased parking fees. So, there is some concern there when you start talking about increasing those fees. I'm still not sure until I see the details on how this is gonna affect us. So, I really can't say today, I'm completely against this idea, but I would ask that we take a step back and take, you know, get an idea from residences as well, because as Jay mentioned, I'm not sure that everyone realizes the effect it's gonna have. You know, a number of years, there was a concern about trailer parking on Venice, which came up, and what happens is, it then flows out into Tahoe Keys and Tahoe Keys Boulevard, and affects the residents there as well. So, it's not just one simple decision here. It's not just about the businesses, it's also about all the neighbors throughout the whole community. And, you know, we need to get some input. I think you folks need to get their input to make sure that the right decision is made here before, before any decision's made. So, I would just ask you to step back, make sure you get some input from the people, let us get some of the details so we know what we're talking about.
Bob, I agree with you. I just have one question about your operation at Lakeside. The people who come and rent your boats and facilities, are they residents of Lakeside, or they tourists, and they can come, they can actually cross the private beach and then rent from you as independent?
Actually, the marina itself is open to the public. So, the beach, you know, there's a separate entrance for the beach, and the beach controls their access to the beach area. Then the marina has its own gate, and public can come in there. So, whether it's residents, tourists to the area, whatever may be, we'll accommodate anyone.
So, a portion of the Lakeside property is public and a portion is private?
That is correct, yes.
Okay.
Another question on Venice Boulevard. Right now, there is no parking allowed on both portions, except you get close to the marina. There's fifteen-minute parking or twenty, I forgot what it is, where you can unload your boat, then you gotta go. Something, just to think about, and I agree with Hal, we probably need to do a little better reach-out here, but to me, it would help take the load off the parking lot and have some people be able to leave their car all day there with a boat, a trailer attached, so.
There's no parking there now, and so, we're talking about, but paid parking, it's not gonna exacerbate the situation. It'll help relieve-
Particularly when your parking lot's full, and particularly at Fresh Catch when you do such much business in the summer there.
You know, I think, one of, one of the challenges is there, with, with the parking on the street, is, you know, you get a lot of residents, I think, that wanna access the beach out there, take their dogs out there for a walk and whatnot, and so, I think you'll see a lot of the street parking there on Venice.
No parking allowed, no?
None at all. And, what I had talked to Tony about, and I asked-
We're talking about-
Yeah.
Let's, let's continue on the public comment unless you-
Well, just, this is part of the public comment I wanna make, 'cause it came from the public. They wanted a place to be able to park their boat and trailer where they use, that went out on the lake today. Remember, we talked about it, and we said we'd agendize this issue, and they, right now, they gotta launch their boat, go home, take their trailer home, come back and park their car somewhere on Venice, or in your parking lot, and then go use their boat, come back, go home, get their trailer, come back, get, you know, back and forth. This might solve part of it. It, it doesn't really work if you charge three bucks an hour, 'cause that's twenty-four bucks for the day. So, anyway, I think it might help the marina business a little bit.
Right. There's definitely challenges there with parking as it is, as you know, and to jump that same scenario of trailer parking over to Lakeside Marina, we have a challenge there as well with the thought of this plan. And that is, you know, right now, when people come, they launch their boat there, and they're gonna park on the streets, well, where are they gonna park right now? 'Cause they're not parking in the spots that I believe you're looking to meter there. They're parking, you know, around the area, in front of vacation homes, et cetera. And so, there's just a whole number of details that need to be addressed here with this, and some great questions here brought up, so.
Any other questions, Bob? I invite more public comment. Is there anyone else in the audience who'd like to speak to this issue?
Good afternoon. Zan Barker with a business at four zero eight one Lakeshore Boulevard. I also come here representing Lakeside Park as their president. And it's a little bit chilling to all of us to have this announcement made, and we've had no input or any contribution. We have several businesses down there. There's a Wedding Chapel, there's a restaurant, the marina. The restaurant alone has some forty employees. We have a hundred and forty members in Lakeside Park, motels, some commercial, and a number of vacation rentals and homes. Everybody I've talked to is really concerned, and they've not been able to accommodate your schedule to be here. I beg you to, to also step back as both Jay and Bob have asked you to do. Yes, you need to balance your budget. We've been struggling down there. I've been there with one business for twenty years, another business for fifteen years. Redevelopment was promised. It was a rosy path. I have yet to see it, any effect. We look for business help from the city, and we really haven't received that much. The redevelopment hole, convention hole, has taken twelve of our properties from Lakeside Park's waters, water, which incidentally, Lakeside Park is a water company, nonprofit. It provides water to its customers within the confines of State Line to Park Avenue and Fifty to the Lake. With those twelve properties removed from our, our revenue, it's really significantly impacted us, and we're struggling. Our businesses are struggling. It's chilling. I, I think that with the restaurant, if people have to char, be charged to come in there, they're easily gonna go to other restaurants. I don't know what you're gonna do, I don't know what we can do, but it needs to be figured out. You have eighty slips in Lakeside Marina that belong, that are rented to seasonal customers. They come on daily to use their boat and use the lake to recreate. That's gonna be severely impacted, and it's gonna severely impact the revenues to our, our marina. We're paying taxes to the city, we're paying taxes to the state, and we're being taxed by this new parking plan. I beg you, involve us in it. There is a solution, and I think we can all support that solution. I, I think that that covers most of what I can say. Are there any questions that I can answer for you? Thank you very much.
Any other public comment? I know that we have a letter that we would like to read into the record, so.
Actually, I'm just gonna note it for the record. It wasn't actually requested that the entire letter be read into the record, but the letter was received from Andy and Barbara Engelhardt. They are located on Azur Avenue, and each, one of the council members, city manager, police chief, and code enforcement officer, received a copy of the letter. It was dated Monday, February sixth, and basically, it states concerns and some opposition and concerns on negative impact in that Lakeside area. Thank you.
Okay. No more public comment. I'll bring it back to council, and for further conversation, Hal?
First of all, I do agree that this is gonna have a significant impact on a lot of businesses and our community in general. It's a new mindset. I do think that we need to have a new hearing, but also, we are all here. We went through a painful process during our budget cuts. We heard a lot of vocal concerns regarding elimination of jobs, particularly snow drive, snowplow drivers and a lot of services, and they were necessitated by those cuts. And we even retained certain city employees without defining a revenue source. We made a commitment at that meeting that we were gonna look at new revenue sources that were fair and consistent with other resort communities, and we talked about paid parking, we talked about putting a TOT increase and a restructuring of our business license fees on a ballot. These things were all discussed, and I, we just can't have it both ways. We, we retained employees that we really couldn't afford, and we said we were gonna look at some revenue sources, and we're consistent. I mean, you go to Pope or Balden Beach, it's paid to park at that beach. And most resort communities, paid parking is a component. Now, whether it's at all the places defined here or not, but paid parking, we have to pay to maintain those streets, the city does. And I, I don't think tourists in, in general are objecting to, to paying for parking when they go to a resort community or to use any, any amenity. So, I'm, I'm not opposed to, to paid parking, but I am opposed to trying to make a decision at this meeting.
Tom?
I, I agree. I think we need some more input. My concern, particularly at Lakeside, is that's a private beach, even though it's a public street, but I think good government dictates we reach out to the communities. Some of these areas, for example, probably need to have a little more discussion in Tahoe Keys area, Venice, for example, exactly how that's gonna lay out with the residents. I have no problem with Reagan Beach, you know, but what happens is, if you institute this in a vacuum, all of a sudden, everybody packs the city council meeting. So, I think it's just good government, and I'm, I'm for the paid parking. I think we proved it down at, at State Line area that it works, but we have to be a little more sensitive now that we're going out into the communities on how it impacts our businesses. So, I think we need to have some more homework to do, and, and work with the local businesses, and see if we can find some resolution that's a win-win for all of us. Maybe there's a period of time, you know, if there's a special event or something they're doing for locals, we don't, you know, charge for parking. I don't know, but I think we've got some more work to do. I think we're headed in the right direction, but we need to do some reach-out.
I, I agree with what Hal and Tom have said. I think we should maybe have a workshop or some, much more venting of this issue so that we can be more specific as to what we, where we wanna put meters, and, and look at the consequences in the neighborhoods. Because putting meters up and bringing revenue to the city is a good idea. Having it overflow into, creating other neighborhood problems is not a good idea, and so, we, I think we need to, this, 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 this proposal, we knew was coming down at some point, it's just that it, it only came out on late Thursday, Friday, and I don't think there's enough of time for the public to weigh in, and maybe a workshop as opposed to a hearing might be the appropriate way of massaging this more and then making a, a better decision.
I agree that we need more community input, obviously. My question is whether we have a workshop, or whether we can engage a small group of Concerns folks who can, who can come up with a plan that is more focused and targeted and, and has better sense of what, where the problem areas are, so, and, and maybe more effective than, you know, simply a workshop where we have a lot of public speakers. In other words, a real plan as, as opposed to just venting.
Is there a process to, we can notify the neighborhoods via mail that are gonna be affected? I think that's probably important, like we do when there's zoning issues and things?
You know, the, the, one other point I wanted to make is, when this comes back to us, can we bifurcate the different areas that we wanna put meters? It might make it easier to try to, you know, approve the things that are clear to us, and maybe wrestle over the ones that are-
Like Reagan Beach, for example.
Yeah, like Reagan Beach, so that we start implementing this, but instead of trying to eat the entire elephant at once, you know, we can do it in little bites.
No, that's your prerogative. Just recall that you did adopt a fiscal year budget that includes this revenue, so anything you've reduced is gonna have an adverse impact on our operations. We're gonna have to cut where we don't produce the revenues we anticipated. So, as long as you're aware of that, you can do anything you want.
Well, that's why I'm wondering if we can't get a small group together to, to come up with a plan that, you know-
Bottom line, I mean, Hal mentioned this. I mean, there is a history here of paying for parking at- for parking at beaches. It happens to be the U.S. Forest Service of all people has been doing it, not the city. We do not know of any navigable body of water in the state of California that doesn't have paid parking, with the exception...
Bringing it back, okay.
We purposely selected this because there is no public appetite for taxes or fees. I mean, we have to operate a business. We've made significant expense reductions, as you well know. This is the only proposed increase in revenue out of a ninety-four million dollar budget. So if we want to reduce that even further, then just give us our marching orders and we'll make up the difference with cuts.
I think it's not that as much as it's process and collaboration. You know, we know it's coming, but this town hasn't had paid parking in the city, other than what we started down at State Line, so it's going to take a little education and cooperation and working, that's what I'm saying.
We respect that, we'll do that. We did have two hundred people at both of our budget hearings that clearly heard us articulate this plan, so it's not as if this is news.
They also heard about eighty other items, too, so we're focusing on this and I just think the reach out is important.
If I could add one other comment regarding the idea of getting public comment or public input and creating more conversation. We are bumping up against a timeline. We're counting on those revenues to be put in place this spring. Next meeting, we have on the agenda an item that includes purchasing various kiosks. So any decision-making relative to the number of kiosks is going to be affected. We have concrete platforms to be put in place for each of those kiosks. There's a lot of work that needs to be done in order to unveil this or roll it out. And each week or month that we delay in terms of process, it's one week or month less in terms of revenue, so.
Understood. That's fine. I think a small group that really looks at, and obviously our speakers today are certainly a resource for us, but perhaps that would be...
Why don't we give them a deal they can't refuse?
I think we need to recognize that the input has to be more than the answer now. That's not a solution.
Well, again, I think bifurcating or dividing the different proposals in different areas might make it easy to do the ones that are clear to us. I also, regarding this particular packet item, I would have liked to see a more detailed map exactly where all these parking spaces are going. By just having, you know, an aerial view and an address to look at, I just don't have a clear enough feeling as to where it's all going to be laid down. So if I could get more specifics, I'd like to see it.
Okay, then do we have a consensus from council that we are going to send this back to the city manager and we're going to look at a smaller working group and come back with recommendations, not for our next council meeting, but in a month?
First of all.
And I would like to add that while I do understand selecting zones, I also think the issue of what the cost will be are based on the biggest, the bigger project, and I'm not sure if there's a cost differential if we opt to do specific zones, but maybe that's something that we can look at as well. Okay? Any other conversation, discussion? Then let's adjourn to lunch and we are back at one thirty with a time-certain item.
I appreciate the time certain, but I'd like to have an hour lunch. And so let's continue the time certain until two o'clock. I mean, we're not going to have a lot of people here for that and it's only the advisor. I don't see one thirty being so dead.
Okay, we will re-adjourn at two o'clock.
I was on his way a moment ago, I think Ellen's going to get him.
And then we just had this one, this really just sort of showed you what this is your projected payroll for your group. And so when you get out here in twenty-one, somewhere between twenty-six and thirty.
Are we ready back there? Can we call this meeting to order? Okay. All righty. We are going to now get a presentation on regarding G A S B forty-five validation report relative to the city's retiree health plan. Mr. Bartle, I believe you're presenting this?
So thank you very much. Let me maybe start off with something I try hard to have councils understand, and that is that this is very, very much an honor for me to talk to you all about, a topic that you probably would prefer we not spend much time on, probably out of most folks' comfort zone, if you will. You do, I believe you do need to know. So we're going to... Okay? Oh, this guy over here?
Yeah. Now we need the expert. I'll fix it.
Okay? Thank you.
Now let's move it.
It's like news on the mouse, right?
Okay, now you can use the arrow button.
Okay, great.
This arrow button here will get you forward.
Okay, thank you. So what we'll do is start off and talk about some definition of terms. We'll then give sort of an overview of the benefits that we're looking at, and then we'll talk about the demographics, your population. At the risk of getting myself in trouble here, I would like to encourage you all, if okay, with the mayor to interrupt and ask questions as we go. I'd leave that up to you, but I just want you to know that I'm very comfortable doing it that way.
I'm only going to move this along because I know that we have a closed-door meeting, a closed session, and that we lose our attorneys at three-thirty, is that correct?
So, okay, very good. Thank you. You all issue your financial statements in accordance with governmental accounting standards, and the Governmental Accounting Standards Board issues statements that really sort of describe what the appropriate standards are. So statement number forty-five very simply says you all need to account for other-than-pension post-employment benefits. And what we're really talking about here is retiree medical benefits. The accounting standard does not require that you pre-fund. The accounting standard does say what you should do is have an actuary tell you how much you should be pre-funding, and then you will accrue on your financial statement the difference between what the contribution requirement was and what you actually do contribute. The definition of terms on slide one, we're going to go through these in a little bit of detail when we get to the actual numbers, but I'll kind of leave those here for you to refer back to. Just very, very quickly, normal cost is sort of a cost of service number. It's the value of benefits being earned by people who are rendering service to the taxpayer. So that's very, very different than your pay-as-you-go cost. Pay-as-you-go cost is what are you paying to people who have stopped rendering service to the taxpayer? So actuarial accrued liability is arguably how much, if you had been funding this from day one and all the assumptions were met, how much would you have set aside? I sort of think of it as a target asset value, and the unfunded actuarial accrued liability is the difference between what you should have and what you actually do have. Okay, I pressed the wrong button again. One more time, sorry about this. So what am I pressing to cause it to do that?
You're pressing this arrow, and you should be pressing this arrow.
No, well, okay.
So let me just click it.
Okay?
So just this arrow.
Okay, got it. The, what the actuary tells you you should be contributing is called the annual required contribution. You should understand that there is nothing required about it. Probably should have been called the annual what you should be contributing rather than required, but it is the normal cost, the cost of service, if you will, for active employees, plus an amortization of your unfunded liability, and your net OPEB obligation is what you have on your financial statement. It's the historical difference between what you should have contributed and what you actually did, and your annual OPEB cost is sort of an adjusted arc. Your retiree healthcare benefits are only for those employees hired before January one two thousand and eight, so you have a closed population. People hired after that date are in a separate individual defined contribution account. There were significant increases in the actuarial liability in this valuation. We'll chat in a couple of slides about the reasons for those increases. But you've got a September thirty two thousand and eleven unfunded liability of about forty-five million dollars, a big number. Your annual accounting accrual, about four point two million dollars, and this does include the reduction in the cost for going to a high deductible, high co-pay medical plan. Currently, the city is funding four hundred thousand dollars above the current pay-as-you-go amount. And what you're going to hear me say in a couple of slides is that it will take a very long time to, for that four hundred thousand plus pay-go to really pay off the unfunded liability. Long-term implications of limited pre-funding really are increasing payments to retirees, a number that is really increasing relative to the payroll of this group, certainly increasing relative to the budget of the city, and furthermore, an increasing balance sheet liability number. Additional pre-funding really results in more of the benefit payments paid by investment income. It does require obviously more cash to go ahead and get that additional amount in there, but lower balance sheet liability and lower plan liability. To the extent that you pre-fund at a higher amount, we can use a higher expected return because more of the money is earning the higher rate of return. And better alignment of employee costs with employment. So your benefits for people hired prior to January one of oh eight are, fall under the category of being relatively generous. The city provides retiree healthcare contributions up to a percentage of the medical and dental premium, so if you've got ten years of city service, you get twenty-five percent. Fifteen years, you get fifty. Twenty years, you get seventy-five, and at twenty-five years of city service, you get a hundred percent. And those percentages include the premium for the spouse and surviving spouse and dependents, except for some folks hired in June of oh one and June of oh two, depending upon bargaining groups, where it applies to a lower amount. So if you look at the benefits for those folks hired prior to June of oh one or June of oh two, depending upon bargaining group, those are, you're really providing for long-service employees at or close to full medical, and that's really what generates the cost here. The retiree premiums are increased, what you're asking retirees to pay are increased annually by the active premium increases. The plan change effective going to a single high deductible plan is in the valuation, and in January of twelve, you can kind of see how the retiree premiums dropped. Single coverage, under age sixty-five, not yet Medicare-eligible, at about six hundred dollars a month. Medicare-eligible, about five hundred and sixty dollars a month. And then you see family coverage varying based upon whether or not an individual and the spouse are or not eligible for Medicare. You all actually had quite a change in the population from the prior valuation. This current valuation is as of September thirty two thousand and ten. We actually used September thirty two thousand and eleven data to do that valuation. You all went from active employees, almost two hundred, down to a hundred and thirty-nine. That's really due to the closed nature of the plan, but you also had a pretty big increase in the number of retirees going from a hundred and seven to a hundred and thirty-four. There's a couple of pretty key numbers there that don't really jump out, but you all should understand. Your benefit, by and large, is not any different, except for the vesting, if an individual retires earlier. Your average retirement age, that's the age at which people retire, right about fifty-six in the current data, little over fifty-six and a little under fifty-four for the safety group. Those are relatively young for retirement ages, and that exacerbates, if you will, the cost of the, cost of the plan. Slides seven and eight go over the actuarial methods and assumptions to limit the pain associated with this conversation. What I've tried to do here is to just show the key assumptions. And the key assumptions are what we refer to as the discount rate. So if you owe a thousand dollars a year from today, how much would that thousand dollars be? And what we're doing, because you're only contributing pay-go plus four hundred thousand, we are grading into the full expected return in your irrevocable trust at six and a half percent over twenty-four years. So we refer to that as a select and ultimate discount rate. That's a relatively low discount rate. Pre-funding would bring that up to a little higher number. So that's key change number one. Key change in the assumptions, number two, is we are using higher anticipated medical cost increases or healthcare cost increases. We're at about ten percent. We expect claims and premiums to go up about ten percent in the short run, grading down to about five percent in nine, ten years. The, probably the most asked question we get about healthcare is, how is it really going to be possible that it will get down to five? And the logic behind that... And the, the logic behind that is very, very simple. Right now, healthcare makes up about 17% of the GDP. GDP, depending upon how, how you feel that will grow, if that grows at 2%, 3% into the future and healthcare grows at 6%, 7%, 8% into the future forever, then at some point in time, 100% of the GDP is healthcare related. Now, we are confident something will happen before then and so, yeah, yes. And so what we've done here is set an ultimate healthcare trend of 5 with a general inflation assumption of 3. That gets healthcare as a percentage of GDP in the low 20s. So we're expecting healthcare as a percentage of the GDP to continue to grow, but if we used a higher healthcare long-term trend, then you would end up with healthcare as a percentage of GDP above 25%. What is interesting to me is we're not hearing very many of the healthcare economists talk about what that ceiling should be, but generally, historically, they've said below 25% is an appropriate long-term target. I have talked to some healthcare economists who believe that it may be higher than 25%. So I don't think you would, I don't think you should think of this assumption as an overly conservative assumption, but more a realistic assumption. The question really is, does, is it really going to bear out? If it does not, if actual healthcare costs grow more than this, then your liabilities are understated. So that's the bad news, if you will, about that particular assumption. Pardon me? The odds are excellent, it's not going down anytime soon. Assumption number three that is really important, this is the same assumption that we used before. We think it's consistent with your experience. What happens is people who have less than 10 years of service can still buy into the plan, they just pay the full premium. There is a cost associated with that to the plan for doing that because claims are expected for some people to be higher than the premium, lower than the premium for other, other folks. So we expect a certain amount of anti-selection in these numbers. In other words, retirees who are less healthy are going to be more likely to buy into the plan. So you see a 50% participation assumption even for those who have none of the premium paid for. And then at 20 years of service, we think when you get to close to 100% of the premium, most people are going to buy into, buy into the plan. The fourth row there, CalPERS changed their, what are referred to as demographic assumptions. The two assumptions here really being how long are people going to live, mortality if you will, and then at what age will people retire? There really were two very significant changes. Significant change number one is that, how are people retiring? What's interesting is CalPERS has really changed the rates of retirement to be much more consistent with your history. Before they made that change, the expectation of when people were retiring was a little bit after your experience dictated. So you'll see that pops the liability up and then the mortality. CalPERS is really doing what most actuaries do. We do a study and they discovered gee, people are living longer, so let's build in a, a expectation that people are, are living longer. So that, that particular assumption had more impact on the safety than the non-safety numbers. I'm going to skip over slide eight. I just want to talk about one particular item. You'll, you'll see this in a next slide, but we are using what is referred to as a smooth market value to, to determine how well you're funded. What that really means is if you have investment losses, we are not recognizing all of those right away. If you have investment gains, we are not recognizing all of those right away. And then if you look at slide nine, you really see the implications of that. So at September 30, 2011, your market value of assets, about $4.3 million. Because of our five-year asset smoothing and the investment return in the trust not being stellar, we're using an actuarial value of assets greater than the market value because we still have investment losses that are being graded in. So at September 30, 2011, we've got about $4.8 million in assets used to determine your contribution rate and about 4.3 in actual assets. And then if you look at that table towards the bottom of, of slide nine, you see at the September 30, 2008 funded status. If you look at that actuarial accrued liability, the prior valuation, $28.9 million. The current valuation, $48.3 million. And you look at your funded status, very, very little change, actually a drop. Your assets went up quite a bit, but they did not really keep pace or close to keep pace with the actuarial liability. Slide 10 is sort of a graph of that. Slide 11 talks about really the reasons for the increase in the liability. Prior liability, that 28.9, we expected over that three-year period, the liability to grow to about $31.4 million. And what you really see down that column are the reasons why it grew more than that. And let me talk first about the more significant numbers, the ones listed under assumption changes. That discount rate, sort of the byproduct of your pre-funding, it increased the liability about $3.8 million. The increase in the healthcare trend assumption was the single biggest increase in the liability, $8.4 million. And then the demographic experience, rates of retirement, mortality, $4.2 million. So those three items really were the, the single biggest reason why the numbers are going up. You also had, actual medical costs went up more than expected, about $4.3 million. Your demographic experience, more retirements than, than expected at earlier ages, $2.4 million. And then the plan change to the high deductible, about $4.7 million. Let me go back and, and one thing I really wanted to point out on slide nine that is particularly important. When you look at that actuarial accrued liability, we're showing it separately for actives and retirees. If you look at the, the September 30, 10 number, the active liability about $11 million, the liability for folks already retired, about $37 million. So that is a relatively high ratio. The value of your benefits is really resting with the folks who are already getting those benefits, not working for the city anymore. Your annual required contribution, city funding amount in 11, in 9, 10 was about $2.3 million. And you can see it's the sum of that, normal cost plus the unfunded liability amortization. And then when you go to 11, 12, two years later, that has popped up to $4.2 million. Yes.
John, can you point out, I think it was on the prior slide, there was a reduction in the unfunded liability. Can you reflect what caused that?
Oh, which, you're talking about slide 11 right here? 4.7, that's moving to a high deductible healthcare plan. That, that was a savings of $4.8 million.
And it's on top of the operating savings of roughly half a million dollars per year. These are the kinds of impacts, even though it was a very unpopular decision, you can see it physically, the kind of impact it had.
Go to that next slide you just showed, I have a question on that.
This, this, it. Oops, sorry.
Nope, nope.
This one right here?
No, no, right here. In 2009, 10, oops, just go back, the one you just had.
Yes.
It was 2.2 million total.
Yes, 2.3, yes.
In just two years, it's doubled, the 4.2.
4.3.
And is because of all those factors?
That's exactly right.
On this pace, we're done.
We would not hope, we would not expect future growth to be at this, at this rate. But, but really, if you think about this, it's really a function of claims for retirees. So while I'd love to sit here and tell you I know it's not going to go up at that rate, we just, we, you just don't know.
Yeah, we still have a lot of retirees in the pipeline. It's indicated by the data here. We have disproportionate people retiring early based on national standard.
So they're in the pipeline for a lot longer and therefore generating larger claims over a longer period of time.
That's right.
And we haven't even seen the worst of it because recent study, at least I've read, indicated that almost 90% of your healthcare costs occurs in the last 90 days of your life. We haven't reached that stage with most of our retirees. So if this is bad, wait till the future.
What I don't understand is the premiums don't seem to go down significantly at 65. Doesn't Medicare take up most of that? Why do the premiums go from 1,600 to 1,400 once they turn 65? It seemed like it'd be significantly more than that.
Yeah, so we could actually talk for a very long time about that.
No, I don't need to.
But, but, but we, so you're, you all have a broker who helps the city determine the premiums. Probably the best way to describe that is they probably don't adequately, that the pre-65 premium is probably significantly understated and that post-65, you know, may be an adequate level, if you will.
I was hoping to see a trend as, as our retirees get to be that 65, the burden on the city would be significantly less, but it doesn't seem.
Well, no, it, the burden is less, but what you're not doing is charging earlier retirees enough so that you see that reduction. So if we, if, if, so at the risk of getting myself in further trouble here, if you just kind of picture a claims, you, you're absolutely right. At age 35, the claims are relatively low. They grow noticeably until you become Medicare eligible and then at Medicare eligible, they drop because Medicare is repaying a large portion of, of that. So your premiums really don't reflect that to a very large degree because that pre-65 premium is substantially below what the cost of claims is.
But I thought, whether the premiums were just a symptom, but I, I thought that our actual liability would decrease as the majority of us, the retirees, got through that 65 period. And behind him, we're flushing out with the new program with a, we're not giving full retirement to.
Yeah, we, we, we also, you also have issues about requiring people who are Medicare eligible to really sign up for, sign up for Medicare. So we don't know for sure that everybody over 65 is in fact signed up for Medicare. So that's, that's, that's not an insignificant question.
Is that, is that a violation of our plan, our requirements, they do sign up?
John, I'm sorry to interrupt, but we do in our plan require that they are on Medicare and we pay secondary.
Yeah, but I think a significant issue, if you look back at the demographics, the average age of a retiree currently is only 62. So that means the majority of them haven't become Medicare eligible.
Yeah.
You know, so when you get to retire at 56 or 53, you're in the pipeline for a long time before the federal government comes in to help us out.
We, we also are, are showing here, in 9, 10, the unfunded liability was really being amortized over a, a shorter, excuse me, a longer period of time compared to 2011, 12. What we're doing on 13, yes. Yep.
Just want to mention that in 2009, 10, the city was almost funding 100%. If you see that the total was $2,284 and we funded $2,802. So it was pretty close, but as we look at the projection now, it's, the requirement is nearly twice that.
Much farther off, right, that's right. So what we've done on slide 13 is to project out over the next 10 years what your current pre-funding model will, will get to. Originally, when you began pre-funding, you put a relatively large amount into the, into the trust. That's what generates a negative net OPEB obligation or a net OPEB asset. What you're really doing is wearing that asset away so that in 10 years, you will have an obligation on your books of about $17 million. So that's 17 sort of represents, if you all were a publicly traded company, sort of a, a reduction to shareholders' equity. It's an IOU that you need to pay down the road because you haven't set it aside in the past.
Your corporation would have made changes 10 years ago.
That's probably true. Slide 14 says if we don't change the discount rate, but you all wanted to contribute an aggregate amount of $4 million, including your pay-as-you-go, not going to suggest that we know you have the cash available to do that. You look at that column labeled pre-funding, $2.4 million in addition to the pay-as-you-go, so an extra $2 million. That amount decreases over time to about $1.3 million. And if you pay more than the $400,000, we can use a higher discount rate. And so what you see on slide 15 is your actuarial accrued liability dropping from 48 and 1/4 million to 39.1 million only because you are putting more money into the trust sooner. The best way to think of this is the more money you get into the trust, the more of the benefit payments are paid from investment earnings and that's what that reduction of $9 million really represents, is the expectation that more of the benefit payments are paid from investment earnings rather than cash. The arc would drop from 4.2 million to 3.7. That retains the 20-year amortization and if you went to a shorter, excuse me, a longer amortization, 25 years, then that if you went to a shorter, excuse me, a longer amortization, 25 years, then that reduces the ARC further to $3.4 million. Now let me tell you a bias that I have. This is a closed population. If you're really going to set money aside for this, it would be good to get that there before the benefit payments sort of peak out, so that you get the advantage of the investment earnings. So I'm not going to suggest again that you have the money, but the shorter the amortization period, the more you take advantage, if you will, of those higher investment earnings. And slide 16 really represents, you look at the pre-funding amount, would go from 2.1 down to 900,000. And then slide 17 has four lines on it. The dash line, the line, the red line with the dashes, is your expected benefit payments. Okay? And what you really see is, they peak out somewhere in the neighborhood of '20, '41, '42, 30, 30 years from now. They're not peaking for 30 years. And what you see, that solid red line, that is your current funding policy. Pay-as-you-go plus $400,000. Yeah. Well, what happens is, you get to '41, '42 at about the peak, and that $400,000 becomes enough to take care of the benefit payments after that point in time. So I'm not suggesting $400,000 doesn't get you funded adequately. It just takes a very long time. Until you get to the peak in your benefit payments, you really aren't adequately funded. You see two green lines there? The solid green line is, what would your contribution be if you amortized your unfunded liability over 25 years? What you would see is, somewhere in the neighborhood of '20, '26, your payment would be below your pay-as-you-go, and it would fall off to virtually zero in that 25-year period, '20, '36, '37. And then the dash line, the exact same concept, except we're paying the unfunded liability off over 20 rather than 25 years. So what you really see is the difference between your current funding policy, and either of those is bigger in the short run, and then decreases over time. It's the value, really, of setting money aside sooner into an irrevocable trust. And my last slide shows, again, your current funding policy and the pay-as-you-go, but we're comparing that to the expected payroll of your active employees eligible for this benefit. So what you really see, that's the blue line, is the projected payroll for this population. What you really see is, your current funding policy gets to a bigger cash amount than payroll for these folks in about '20, '29. So if you continue your current policy, you will be paying more in retiree medical benefits than you will be paying in payroll for these employees.
Do you have any good news?
I wish I did.
Wow, that's just devastating. So I will, Christine, do you want to add anything in here, or do you...
Is that why you're leaving?
No, it's not. I guess what I would add is that, you know, the city has already had a policy of pre-funding, now as we realize our liability has changed. As John mentioned, by law, you don't have to pre-fund, but it's, it's a good idea to do so.
Yeah.
And I think one point on the previous slide that you had, it's just, comes down to a function of timing and use of your money. If you decide to pre-fund at a higher rate, lower amortization 20 years, you're going to get to that pre-funded place about 10 years earlier than you would if we go along the current track.
That's right.
Okay, I will open this up to questions from council. Council?
I guess, mine's not a question, but strategies. You know, in business, when you know you have this problem, you've got to start planning now. Yeah, we could just delay it and pass it on to the next five councils and next generation of employees, but I think to be prudent, we have to start planning a strategy right away. It's going to be painful. It's going to still require more cuts and changes in benefits and things like that. I, this is a huge liability. The other thing I'd like to see us do, I think, either electronically or mail this to all our current and past employees, so they can understand the magnitude of this problem. I mean, this is huge. If I was in the business, the only way I'd see out of this is bankruptcy. I mean...
I actually think that that's something that we need to look at as well.
Yeah, I mean, this is...
I mean, does this bankrupt the city? But let me see if I understand, excuse me, Tom, have you finished?
Yeah, no, go ahead.
A lot of numbers, and I'm a words kind of gal, not a numbers kind of gal. What you're suggesting in terms of pre-funding, is increasing our funding by $2 million a year?
Yeah. Well, here is really what I'm suggesting. Here's what I'm suggesting. What I'm suggesting is that you all, number one, recognize the implications of what happens if you don't do that. So what that means is, your pay-as-you-go, your cash cost is going to just continue, the longer you wait to pre-fund, the more painful it is going to be to pay this. So that's, I'm suggesting that you recognize that first. I'm then suggesting that most people would say that it is, while it is not required to pre-fund, there's an argument that if you just looked at this, if you looked myopically at this, that it would be fiscally prudent to pre-fund. What I can't do, what I can't tell you, is whether this is a better use of city funds than something else. I'm not qualified to say that. But I am, but I am qualified to tell you, if you don't do that, it's not going to get better. And one strategy you may want to consider is what a fair number of cities around the state have done, is they look at phasing into paying that full ARC over some period of time. So let's just pretend for a moment...
Let me just, was the number that I...
2 million. 2 million was, is the number.
Thank you. That's it, yeah. Just wanted to know what the number was.
2 million is the number.
So above and beyond, that what the pay-as-you-go is, and the additional 400,000, it would now take the city to 2.4 million a year for, to address it for how long?
Really, that...
Forever.
Yeah, well, no, really, it's that 20, it's that 20-year amortization number.
Yeah, because of 20 years.
For 20 years. Okay, so $2.4 million for the next 20 years is what we're talking about, is what you're saying would be the prudent thing on an actuarial...
Just to be, just to be clear, I'm actually not quite saying that. What I want you to do is look at slide 16. This is the 20-year amortization number. The additional amount in year one is 2.1 million, but that 2.1 million decreases over the next 10 years to less than 900,000 above pay-as-you-go. So, so, we're, that, that, and, and, one thing you may want to think of it, if you think of it as a $2 million number, or in that neighborhood, one approach would be to take that in manageable bites. And I'm not going to suggest that 400,000 a year is manageable, but if instead of 200,000, or 2 million in the first year, if you said 400, 800, 1.2, and you phase into that amount over some four or five-year period, recognizing that phasing in is a little bit of a deferral as well.
So that's a financial strategy?
Yes.
Then there's also investment income, return on income in there also?
Yes.
So you're assuming the market's going to proceed at a certain rate over a certain amount of time?
Yeah. What we have in terms of a long-term investment return here is a 6.5% investment. So it assumes future money will be invested the same way your current money is invested. So there will, we're not expecting the higher rates of return that some other folks might be. It's really a function of how your money is invested.
Based on what John said, if you look at this 10-year, and you could look at it also, if you add up and aggregate those numbers, about one, it's about $17 million. You could divide that by 10 and contribute 1.7 million, and, you know, again, average out the impact. But it's still a significant incremental cost of what we're currently investing, and it does compete against other city resources. But on the other hand, we have a more legal obligation to make sure our retiree health plan is solvent and viable. Despite the efforts we've made today, I don't think there's any recognition of what the city's tried to do. You could put your head in the sand and ignore this. This is a time bomb, and it will go off down the road. You won't be around. Or you could do the more professional and prudent thing and address the issue, but make retirees and employees understand, this is a zero-sum budget. It has to come from somewhere. There are no free lunches. So if they want us to safeguard their future healthcare, we have to make some tough decisions today and in the near future to ensure that. If they don't care, then we can invest money elsewhere. We've talked about also, do we give a financial center for people to opt out of their retiree health plan? We could. I doubt many people would take that, because this is such a rich and attractive plan by any measure. So I don't think that's much of an option. We could look at renegotiating some contracts. For example, right now, employees get to 500 hours of sick leave upon retirement. Renegotiate that, that's $670,000. I don't know how that benefits the taxpayer, but, I mean, these are some of the things that need to be put into play to offset these kind of gargantuan investments we have to make to ensure the solvency of this retiree health plan, which is a legacy benefit that employees look forward to.
The question I have is, and I've talked to some other entities in special districts about healthcare costs, make sure my numbers are correct. We pay $1,700 per month per employee for active employees, correct? And then we pay $1,400 per month for retirees. Is that, those numbers correct?
Yeah. I think that may be for the family rate, which most people...
Yeah, but average, the numbers I've seen. I've talked to some other entities, including El Dorado County. They pay substantially less than that. Why is that?
As John indicated, we have a closed pool. We have active employees, and we have almost just as many retirees. They're in the same pool. That's a high adverse risk group. That's why our costs are higher. We have a disproportionate number of older members in our plan, because they are combined, they're not segregated out. And we are in a probably less competitive health environment, being in South Lake Tahoe than, for example, if we were in the Bay Area or Sacramento. There's clearly a cost related to that.
Is there any chance we can explore the possibility, maybe they don't want it because of our liability, but joining forces with something like the sewer district and the school district and pool our healthcare?
We can explore that, but again, we would represent adverse risk to their plans. They would have really no financial incentive to do that. They're much younger demographically, don't have the exposure we have. And as John has pointed out, you know, we have a disproportionate number of retirees in our health plan, and many of them are not still Medicare eligible. So we're paying the full freight, it's not being offset.
So what I join, not an asset to go in someone else's...
Yeah. We're a toxic asset.
Question. Some costs tend to go up, and some are fixed. What would be effective of higher inflation over the next five, 10 years? Would that make our burden more severe or less?
More. Hard to really know until we really find out what, if any, healthcare reform we're finally going to have. But the odds are excellent, it would make it more severe. Because in healthcare costs, there is general inflation, and then there is the cost of the healthcare. So if general inflation is at five rather than three, we would expect healthcare costs to also be higher.
But I think so many money's paid to retire, some of the... Money's paid to retirees, is that not a fixed cost?
Well, you're talking about under the current medical plan?
No, I'm not talking about medical. I'm talking about retiree pensions.
Oh. Yeah, no, the, I'm sorry. I thought you were talking about the retiree medical.
I know, I was just wondering.
Oh, you're, you're, what we would expect to happen if there's higher inflation is that that would help your pension unfunded liability. It would not help. It would only help your medical unfunded liability if you had more money in the plan.
Right.
But, but higher inflation likely means, should mean, higher investment return on the pension side. So when you have money there, that will help your unfunded liability if that happens.
Well, Tony, it seems the only thing you can do is, if you want to reduce the size of the retirees in relations, hire more employees now. Never mind.
It might be cheaper.
But let me ask one other question. So if we have a retiree that retires in their 50s, and they work for someone else before they reach their social security age, do they have an obligation, if they have other health insurance opportunities in their successive jobs, to impact what's going on here?
Your benefits are only paid if an individual retires and begins receiving their CalPERS pension benefit. So if that, in your example, they're taking a job with another public agency?
With a private entity.
Yeah. Well, let me, let me do the first part. With another public agency, they would not be eligible for the retiree medical. On the other hand, if they did it with a private, they, you know, you, 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 I don't know off the top of my head which would be primary and which would be secondary. I'm guessing their plan would be primary, the city's plan would be secondary, and the liability would go down. The claims would go, would go down.
Hey, wait, are we, the question is, are we checking into that? Are people working that are retirees under our system, are working for private companies between now and when they get older? Are we, are we, are we assured that there isn't a primary insurance coverage that we are unaware of?
To check, I mean, whether we're coordinating benefits. I think in most of our cases, when people retire here, they retire period.
It's good.
Yeah. Between the pension and the healthcare, it's the gold standard. I don't blame them. But much like the car industry got in trouble because of this, and GM, the moniker for General Motors was, it was a benefits company that occasionally produced a car, that's what we're looking at right now. Benefits organization occasionally provides city services, unless we try to both ratchet down our healthcare cost exposure, but also properly fund this healthcare, so we don't have a problem down the road. Because it wouldn't be right for employees who relied in good faith on a retirement plan that wasn't financially solvent. We don't want to end up being the Vallejo, California of Lake Tahoe.
But let me ask you a question, Tony. What are some of the tools? You had mentioned the negotiating on sick time. What are some of the tools that we can do? Is there any way of...
I mean, the biggest one, which we've partially addressed to great consternation, is made some changes to our health plan. By moving to the higher deductible, increasing the out-of-pocket expense exposure, we have theoretically saved $4.7 million in actuarial costs, but half a million operating cost. The plan needs to continue to be scrutinized. And as unpopular that is, that is the reality if employees really want to have any kind of functional viable health plan 20 years from now. I mean, it's ludicrous to think that we can't, we can't continue to tweak that and improve the cost efficiency of that plan if we're going to be solvent in 20 years. I mean, it's a beast that has to be fed, and... I mean, it's a beast that has to be fed, and it's eating up valuable resources. People want to know why they're not a cost of living adjustment, why they're not merit increases, or, you know, why we're not making greater investments in our infrastructure and our vehicles facilities. It's because of this. It's eating our lunch.
Well, I'm going back to this thing about the 500 sick days, because that's staggering to me, what, what's that all about?
It's 500 hours.
500 hours, that's, sorry.
And that's not uncommon for cities and public agencies to provide that benefit. But again, it's, it's a quid pro quo, is that what people want at the expense of not having a viable, financially secure healthcare plan? We'd have to sit down and negotiate this, we can't do this unilaterally. It would require the collective action of all our unions to agree to those type of adjustments and tweaks. So we've got to look at everything and anything. But in the interim, I think people need to recognize that as long as we have this fiscal burden, we can't expect much increase in salaries, or hiring, or investments in any other parts of the city.
It's a burden that's around our neck that holds us back, and I just want to say one other thing, and I think you said this once before, Claire, and I think it's very important. Tony is just a messenger of bad news. He's also the messenger of how we're going to solve it. And that's critical, because he's brought these problems before us and created a lot. I'm just reading this article, if you haven't had a chance to read it, it almost reflects exactly where we are. This had to be Mayor of Rhode Island, and, you know, he said a supplement tax increase would be least resort, but he added during a recession, in a state with one of the highest unemployment rates, in this case, a city, and a country and cities suffering from a lot of foreclosures, that would be devastating as well. So, you know, it's not just here, it's all over. And it's not, and I said this before at lunch, it's not the fault of the employees or the city, it's the healthcare system that's gone crazy. If the healthcare system just grew by inflation, we'd be fine. And I was criticized one time, why did we give this benefit years ago? Well, back in 92, 94, I think we're paying $320 a month, and it was a good benefit then, we could afford it. And now we're paying 1,700 approximately. So you can see just in that short period of time, it has not grown by inflation, so blame the healthcare system. Unfortunately, we're trying to deal with it, and that's the sad part.
A good example, Tom's right, it's not unique to the public sector, it's not the cause of employees, it's just a fact of life. The federal government has been very reluctant to deal with healthcare. As many people want to criticize Obamacare, it was the first attempt in 50 years to try to wrestle that beast, and it wasn't wrestled to the ground, so we still have that issue. But as an example, American Airlines just last week laid off 13,000 employees, and they also want to liquidate the retiree health plan and the pensions for all those employees. I mean, so it's not unique to the public sector. The Detroit Motor Company's, GM, Chrysler, all went through this restructuring and reengineering of their health plan and pension systems over the last several years. And lo and behold, they not only paid the federal government back their loans, but they're all profitable today. It just shows you how significant this cost legacy is to being able to be a viable, both public or private sector business.
Tony, let me, obviously, this is a huge problem, and a frightening one at that. But let me just ask you a question here. Here's the problem, as you have very adequately presented it. The question becomes a couple of things. First of all, do we have several strategies to look at this, or how we are going to go about that? But if we just, just in terms of the cost of people, if we assume even 17, 1.7 million, what is that impact on our payroll? How many positions is that, is what I'm asking, because where else is it going to come from?
Seventeen to 20 positions. As an example, when we did our reorganization last March, we eliminated 15 positions, that saved us 1.8 million dollars. But many of those were senior management with higher salaries. We reduced our senior management level by 40%. In the past year, we reduced our frontline employees and supervisors by 20%. I don't see how we have any more capacity. Employees are rightfully complaining about the workloads they have today. I don't see how that's possible to reduce our staffing anymore and still provide a viable product and service to the public. But same time, what are our choices? You know, we have some potential funding from the liquidation of the RDA, that's a million dollars a year. Does that automatically get snagged by this, in lieu of other investments the city, like our roads, which our public is screaming for? The public here wants investments in our infrastructure, and this type of situation robs them of that. And will continue to rob them of that until we come up with larger-scale structural changes to our organization to offset these kind of costs. But we need the cooperation of our, all our collective bargaining units to grasp this issue and come to terms with it. Instead of resenting and fighting reality, to embrace it and make the tough decisions to ensure that these legacy benefits are secure. I don't want people working here for 20 years and then finding out what they relied upon won't exist. That's not right, that's not fair. But in order to ensure that level of security, we need to make some tough decisions today to ensure the future for our employees.
I would agree so, I think what we need from, need to give staff some direction. I don't want to ignore this, I think it's good prudent business to address it. As tough as it is, we're going to have to take, and it's going to have to be a whole host of things on the table that we're going to have to look at to get to that number. I still don't want to jeopardize, as you know, we just passed a deal earlier on hiring a bond counsel, you know, go out and get the COP, that's a top priority in the community. But we also want to see if we can address this healthcare issue for our employees. As I agree, they work 20 years and all of a sudden you don't have that benefit. That's going to happen in some companies that don't address it in other cities and entities. I think it's prudent, a good business, and painful that we have to do it now and not defer. We could defer to the next three councils from us, but that does not solve the problem, makes it only worse, and not fair to the employees.
But I do think that this, I wanted to paint the number in terms of not just employees, but, but I, I think we all recognize that we are already into bone, that there's no more fat, there's nothing else to cut. So, as you said, the question becomes, you know, we have, we may show some benefit from the redevelopment collapsing. What other possibility, what other things would you put out there? Is there anything else that we've got that?
It'd be a series of small things, there's no silver bullet out there. I mean, we've, this, this budget and the next five years has been scrubbed of 25 million dollars in expenses, and we've taken it down to the core, and we've gotten a lot of consternation for that. And now on top of that, we have these obligations and liabilities to meet, it's going to make it very difficult. We just don't have really any flexibility, so it's going to require the united action of just this council, its senior management, and the staff of this city to pull together and come up with some common solutions. Because the bottom line, you could choose to ignore this, as many have, and not worry about it. This bomb's not going off for about 20 years, you'll be long gone. You could take that position, that would be the politically safe, secure position for you to take. But I know that's not your makeup, your makeup is to meet the challenges and find solutions. So if we're going to do that, and if employees want to be assured of these benefits down the road, they need to come to the table with some solutions and not just with an attitude of, don't gore me. Because we need more cooperation, more participation in finding solutions, and they're not going to be easy, and it's going to be a series of, I think, small savings that collectively help address this issue and still preserve the ability of the council to invest in this community. I mean, as reflected in the citizen survey, this community is screaming for modernization and physical improvements. We haven't been making them for a long time, they shouldn't be robbed of the opportunity to keep the community sustainable too. Because that's what really drives our larger economic engine, is our infrastructure and the ability to attract tourists here and make ourselves a really functional business model. Because if we continue to deprive the public of these improvements and our guests, we're going to collapse financially.
You know, there's an other side to this, and I'm sorry, Hal, do you want to say something first? Okay.
This quandary that we're in is, just like the federal government, we have to, we have to cut and raise revenues at the same time in the middle of a recession. And I can't possibly see us going to the public, whether it's a TOT increase, whether it's a business license reorganization, whether there's parking meters, if they think that money's going into the benefits of retired public employees. So, I mean, we've got, both strategies have to work, but it's going to be very difficult to go to the public for any additional revenues when they think it might be going into this black hole. And I, it is a combination of both, but I, it's exacerbated by the fact that our, our community feels like any additional taxation, whether what it is, even if it's on visitors or anything, is not acceptable unless it's going into bricks and mortar.
Here's the other part of this that, that I think is important. In business and how I run my business, there's another option here, and that's to increase the occupancy rate in town. When we're running at 23% occupancy, everyone suffers. If we can, through marketing, whether it's through LTV or Business and Tourist Improvement District, raise that occupancy level, by the way, I was just in Honolulu, it's 82 to 88% at $258 a night, huge. Here we're at 23% at $78 a night, I think it is, or ADR. So there's a flip side of this to working with our business community, it benefits everybody. If I can get my ADR up and my occupancy up in my company, I make more money, I hire more people. The city makes more money on the TOT, so that's an option we really needed to look at and work with the business community, get that occupancy up. We've already done that with things such as snow globe and special events, so I think there's an opportunity there we really need to focus on. Raise those revenues, everybody wins, all boats float higher as the tide comes in.
We've said that for years, and we don't have a lot of money to go into additional marketing.
We, we do, we do in LTV now with the Tourist Improvement District. So my point is, we really need to, from the city's perspective, focus on some of these special events that can bring some people in town and help raise, you know, the occupancy level. And I think that's where the city can benefit, with special events, and we're taking that lead.
Perhaps we can have a bake sale, too. Further comments from council? If not, then I will open up to public participation.
Some ideas, Jerry?
Any members of the public like to discuss this?
Jerry Copeland, representing the AMN Confidential Unit. Just a couple of points on things that were mentioned. On the county, the county cost is about $1,600 also for current employees. They have a significantly lower cost for their retirees because of a significantly less rich benefit. But the other, one of the other issues that you have up here is you're geographically isolated. You don't have the options that other places do, you don't have Kaiser as something they're going to apply for. So that's what, what one of the couple of things that you're dealing with. It's kind of interesting, and maybe in one sense, that good that we're talking about this again. Back in '05, '06, this was the biggest issue that people were dealing with, is your OPEB. And once your GSP45 was going to be, then we hit 2008, instead of being worried where you're going to be 20 years from now, you were worried where you're going to be next year, are you going to be able to even make next year's payroll? And so this went away for about three, you know, two, three, four years. Now we're back to discussing this again. It is really important, you can see what the numbers are, but it needs to be discussed as part of your entire budget picture. You really can't take this as a separate item, and here we're going to fix this, take your roads and fix this, take your pension obligations and fix that. It's all money coming in, money coming out, you need to have this discussion as, as the big picture. What are we going to do when our, when our budget comes out? What's our revenues are going to look like? We, there are significant issues at state level, Brown's got his plans out there. We don't know what pension's going to look like after November, we don't know what those costs are going to be. So there are a lot of challenges, but I think that that's what I would recommend is, and we, we need to look at this. I would ask for transparency, being open, include your bargaining units in this, that we can work with you on what these numbers are. But it's really needs to be a part of your total budget picture as it comes out for your next fiscal year. Thank you.
Jerry, I got a question for you. Do you agree that we need to address the financial side of this now and not wait down the road?
I think we need to, we need to figure something out, and.
Is the answer yes?
Well, yes, but I've heard ideas here that I'm not completely in agreement with.
We're open to a lot of ideas.
But I think there are other ideas, there's, I mean, we, there's pension obligation bonds, there are other issues, there are other items out there. And yes, we need to discuss this, we need to put everything on the table, and we, we need to.
When you say participate, we're not going to float a bond to pay this.
Well, I'm just saying there are other items, there are other, some places are looking at that. Some other places, and, I mean, you are one of the very few agencies that through this last few years continue to pay your ARC. Most agencies just stopped paying it, and there's some of them are starting now, that you've continued to pay that, I think is good. But you're, you're ahead in some respects, or where a lot of agencies are. But yes, it needs to be discussed, but I think it needs to be the big picture.
A question for you, you made reference to El Dorado County, and that their, their liabilities aren't nearly what ours are. And then you said because their benefits aren't, aren't as rich, what's the comparison, what's the difference?
Their, it's hard to compare, their, their retiree benefit is basically the same as yours, percentage based on years of service, but they have a payroll cap on it, so that the cost of retiree health can never go over 1.2% based on the cap they put back in years ago. So while there, and it's interesting, when you do the discussions on the actuariales, is that when you're, the significance of a cap cannot be, I guess, put in the actuary until the cap is reached. So we've been putting numbers out there for the county that are somewhat similar to where you are, but because of that cap, they have, they have other, their, their numbers are going to be lower in the future.
Is, do you think the cap is something that's?
Cap has significant problems to it to your retirees, because when you are a, it really affects your long-term retirees. Someone who retired six, seven, eight years ago, is living on a fixed income, and all of a sudden you plack half out of what you're paying them on a monthly basis. I mean, that's this kind of stuff that, that you need to take into consideration, too, is there's people out there, the ones that retired a while ago are pretty much set on what their incomes are, and to have those significant hits to it at 80 years old is a difficult thing to deal with.
Along that line, I don't want to prolong this, but we, we have a number of retirees at this point. Is there any sense in that number of retirees, the percentage that are in that before Medicare and the percentages that are in that, you know, 75 and never going to be able to make another income? Is there any feel for what the real numbers are there?
We'll, we'll get that, but based upon the average age retirees, it's clear that the majority are, are not Medicare eligible yet. Couple with the richness of our plan, for example, 58% of our retirees, those who served here for 25 years longer, pay nothing.
That average age has been affected by how we've, the last couple of years, and what we put out there to encourage early retirements. And that certainly has had an effect on the average age of retirement.
Thank you. Any other public input? Seeing none, I bring it back to council. At this point, Tony, this was more a presentation, an informative presentation.
Yeah, clearly, we expect to have additional discussions with you. Probably the next major milestone is when we bring you back the mid-year, not only budget, but also the revised five-year plan. We have to show these liabilities in that plan. As you know, we struggled mightily back in the summer and fall to eliminate a $25 million projected deficit over the next five years. We've balanced each one of those next five years, difficult, painful process. Well, clearly, now because of this, we're going to be back at it again. Something to the tune of around $2 million is going to be added to every one of those five years. We've got to figure out a way, how do we balance the budget, which we're legally obligated to do, but it won't come as Hal had reiterated on the back of our residents, because they have no appetite for taxes or increased fees. We're going to get some minor fee increases, hopefully like parking, but there's not a lot in the pipeline. So revenue's not the real solution, it's going to go back to looking at the expense side of the ledger again, unfortunately. And I agree with Jerry, we're going to have to work with our collective bargaining units, this is not good news for anyone. But if employees put a significant emphasis on their retirement healthcare costs, that we're going to have to make some sacrifices today in order to ensure those benefits in the future. Otherwise, we can ignore this problem and just sit back, and in 20 years, it will explode. explode, and none of us will be here to take responsibility for it. But that's not the right thing to do. This is the council's been focused on trying to make this city fiscally sustainable and solvent in the long run, and not using tricks or gimmicks just to get by from year to year. So, clearly, this is gonna be a major undertaking, and we'll work with the, the staff and our collective bargaining units to try to achieve that end.
One thing I do request that I asked for before, I think it's important for our current employees, retirees, to see this actuary study. So, if we can send it to them electronically or via mail, uh, I think it's very important. This is a very comprehensive, uh, report that you did, but I think it's important employees see that and, and be able to really see what the real problem is, and maybe they won't understand all of it, but clearly, they'll, they'll see the big numbers.
It should be accompanied by a narrative, because the layperson's not gonna understand.
No, I was gonna suggest a cover letter, kinda condensing it.
I have a cover letter for you, because I think, you know, I'll just spec for John, John's, uh, expert in it. Uh, but I think...
I've created a cover letter that's fairly simple to understand as a layperson, and so, uh, that will start the discussion. But unfortunately, the burden doesn't rest with our retirees, the burden rests with our active employees, and they have to work with us to come up with some common tough solutions to ensure that that benefit is waiting for them in the next fifteen to twenty years.
I agree with that, but the retirees need to understand the burden that, that's also putting on the current employees at the same time. I think the cover letter's important, and I think getting this information out. The way we're gonna solve it is together, Jerry, and it's not gonna be unanimous, it's gonna be cooperation all the way across the board, and they're gonna have to make a decision on priorities, so. And then, we also wanna make sure we fund our road infrastructure, so good luck.
Back to a bake sale. Anyway, um, any other discussion on this issue?
When will we discuss some direction? Because, uh, I mean, I have some inclinations right now, but we're gonna have another workshop that, after we digest this information, we can?
We'll bring something back, the first meeting in March, as far as some tentative ideas to, to wrestle this and...
If you're looking for input from all of us, I, I, the phased-in approach seems the only way to go. We've got a commitment to this community, and if we're going to increase the occupancy rates and increase, we've gotta have an infrastructure that mirrors that. And, and I think everybody's behind putting some serious money on infrastructure, so if I had to choose right now, today, between improving infrastructure or funding our twenty-year hole...
Yeah.
I, I would do in the short term, trying to, trying to make this place more attractive for visitors as well as, so, I, I can't see us possibly meeting this, this full burden in, in the first year. We've gotta...
Could be, have to be phased in, but it's still a city that we can never, whichever way, whether it's less than two million, it, whether it's a million, million and a half, that's a million, million and a half, we don't currently have, and we have to generate through looking at our ledger. Long-term, as John has articulated, we're looking at somewhere in the neighborhood of, you know, 1.7 to $2 million annually over the next ten years. That's not gonna come easily, but we have this obligation that we have to meet for our employees, and, uh, they need to participate in the solution.
No other comments? Then, um, I think we're ready to adjourn the opening meeting. We are going to go into closed session.
Madam Mayor, we have one other item.
Oh, I'm sorry, apologize.
I would miss your opening business.
Oh, okay. Yeah, great. Business tax. All right, well, let's go back to new business. The proposed ordinance slash ballot measure for June fifth, two thousand and twelve statewide primary election, and ordinance of the City of South Lake Tahoe City Council amending our business and professional tax rates. So, who is presenting that? Christine.
Is this your last official presentation?
It could be. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council.
I just wanna tell you, Christine, whether now or later, that you've been the best financial officer I've ever worked with in any organization, and we're gonna miss you.
Really? Thank you so much, and that really means a lot. I've enjoyed working here, we've had challenges, but you know what? It's never been boring, and most of the time, it's been really fun. It's a great group of people to work with. Anyway, Patrick, uh, city attorney, asked me to present this, and we kind of jointly worked on this report. Back in November, uh, we came before the council with some, uh, various revenue enhancement ideas. One of them is, uh, change in the structure of our business license fees. Uh, if you recall, in two thousand and ten, uh, we had a measure on the ballot, Measure E, which would have increased the maximum cap that businesses pay annually on their business license fee. From right now, it's, uh, three thousand some odd dollars, and it would have increased that maximum to 10,000. And it would have given a 10% reduction, uh, to other businesses on their, um, on their annual fee. That measure failed, um, back then in two thousand and ten. This would be a, a new proposal, uh, which would be to increase that cap, the maximum amount even higher from 10,000 per year to 20,000 per year. So, in other words, a business would have to gross $20 million in gross income or more per year to meet that cap. And, uh, the business license schedule would be reduced by 5% on the fees. And also, um, we would be entertaining the elimination of the annual cost of living increase, uh, that right now is part of the city's ordinance, uh, each year when we update our master fees, uh, we apply the inflation rate based on the Consumer Price Index for all urban consumers in Northern California region. We've done some analysis on this, and, um, one of the questions was, well, how many businesses would be subject to this new and higher cap? We estimate approximately three to five businesses would reach that cap amount, um, and we did do some analysis earlier this morning, about forty-seven businesses would actually pay a higher amount under this proposed structure, but, um, the balance of the businesses, um, which we have about 3,000 in total, would receive a reduction of 5%. And, so what we're asking the council to do is to consider placing this on the ballot, I believe in June.
The, what's the average, the, the 5% reduction, I didn't see it in the staff report, what's the average business license fee in town? Aggregate rate?
The average?
Just an aggregate, is it $400?
Mary Ann, Mary Ann, do you know?
It's all over the board.
Why don't you come up here? Mary Ann Brand manages our revenue division, she's really the expert on business license. Maybe you can give some more insight on that.
I don't know how to answer the question. Um, the, probably the lowest, um, the lowest fee would be $42, roughly $41, $42.
So, that person would save, uh, two bucks?
Yes.
And the one...
But that's, and there's a lo, a lot of businesses pay the...
No, I understand. So, a 400, I'm just trying to put it in, in relation, a $400 year would pay 20 bucks less, but we would also eliminate the increase in COLA every year, which could be significant 'cause it's compounded. That was my problem with Measure E before.
Yes.
Uh, any other questions, council?
This would generate more money, obviously, we wouldn't put it on the ballot, but we can't promise the, the voters that this is gonna go to a specific thing, otherwise it'd have to be a two-thirds majority. So, uh, this is gonna be a tough hurdle. We didn't promote it when it was Measure E, I don't think we spent a dime, uh, from the city's perspective, and I don't think there's any groups out there, small businesses, organizations, or anything that promoted it. So, it's a tougher environment to pass this, even at a 50% ratio, and, and knowing the state of the city, people are gonna think, like Tom used to say, that he doesn't wanna pay tax, increase taxes, we're going to the black hole, as he used to put it.
Well, i- i- and you're right, I, I'd be at a much greater comfort level if I know it's gonna go in the maintenance and repairs of the roads. Much easier to sell. Unfortunately, it's gonna go in a black hole, but what I, I, I support here is letting the voters decide that. And I'm not saying I support this, the measure itself, 'cause I'm absolutely against raising taxes, but let the voter decide, and that's what this does. However, would, if we had, went for a specific project, would I have to get 70%?
Two-thirds.
Two-thirds.
I mean, the recent citizen survey ironically matched the election of the prior year. It was 50% for, 50% against.
But this poll, the least acceptable for taxes on that was about 50?
Yeah.
Of acceptable, you know, taxes for the business, so...
Still tough.
It's a tough sell.
And just, I didn't...
On a good day.
Yeah. I didn't mention that the potential revenue generated by this is probably about between 200 and 270,000 a year, so that's what we're talking about from this measure.
So, it's 200, 270 for this. Parking, you know, on a good day, was maybe 300,000?
Right. It all adds up, but, yeah, it's not a huge amount.
We borrow money from the government?
I don't know yet.
Okay. I, I wanna just say one thing that, that you said, Tom, is that this will go back into the black hole. I think we need to be very careful when we do our mid-year budget, that we're real specific about where our intents are, because I think that we all echo the idea that, uh, we've got to do something about the infrastructure of this town. So, um, and, you know, it cuts to the issue that you're talking about, of making this a marketable town. Any other council questions? Then I'd like to open this up for public comment. Seeing, seeing no public, oh, it will be next week. Seeing no public comment, I bring it back to council, and I ask for a motion.
I'll move, I'll move staff recommendation. Because what I think this does is it, it makes more equal treatment of the taxing issues, that it doesn't affect the majority of businesses here, it, it makes others that are, uh, having a benefit of an artificial cap, to have less of a benefit.
No, I, I agree, and it puts us on, in parity with a lot of the other cities, and, and I, I think it's, it's a, it's a parity issue. I think some of the bigger retailers in our town are paying significantly less than they would in another city, and, and it, it really is unfair to our small businesses to have to pay a larger percentage of their gross revenues than some of the big box stores are paying, so.
Well...
But it's gonna be a tough sell, no matter what.
I, i- in my concern, and I'm against any increase in taxes, what I am for is the process, this is a process. Uh, however, one of my biggest complaints has been that automatic COLA increase every year. We don't get that in business, and by eliminating that, to me, that's very important. So, it's gonna be a tough sell on a good day. I do support the motion, uh, I'm not saying I support the tax, but I just, I support the process.
So, second it.
Uh, go ahead.
All right, I already made one.
No, I think the mayor should.
I'd be delighted to second it.
Thank you. Thank you.
And just for the record, the, um, recommendation is to adopt the resolution to place an ordinance on the ballot to revise the business license tax rate schedule on the June fifth, two thousand and twelve statewide primary election ballot to allow the voters of the City of South Lake Tahoe to approve or disapprove selected business license tax modifications.
The community needs to get out there, support it or not support it, however they wanna do it.
That motion carries by all present.
Okay, before we adjourn, uh, first of all, just find out if we have any reports from the city attorney, city manager. More good news?
No, I'll spare you.
And reports, um, or council comments. Bruce?
Thank you. Two things. First, um, people should know that Angela Swanson's not here today because she had a death in her family last week, and she's dealing with funeral issues. The other comment I wanna make is what we were talking about earlier on, on TR P A, and I say this to Hillary, and I, and I say this to the mayor. When I went to college, I took a class on real estate, and an attorney ta, taught it, and we were talking about how to fill out real estate forms, and he said, "Never let a form dictate terms that should be negotiated." And I say, "Don't let the TR P A process dictate terms that should be negotiated in what is in the interest of our community." That's all.
Hal, comment?
I just wanted to reinforce what, uh, communication from the public, which Kenny Kurtweiler said. I was kinda shocked to know that, that we did an abatement procedure, any, any hiring of an outside firm or individuals to do work for us, that number one, wasn't licensed with the city, wasn't a contractor's license. I, I just, that policy needs to be reiterated, reinforced, brought back. That, I don't know, that probably doesn't happen that often, but I found it very disturbing to know that we had somebody working for us that probably didn't have a city business license or a contractor's license.
I, I, I can't discuss it, but I agree with that.
My question would be, how did that happen?
Have a report on it.
I'd like to have the policy brought back and make sure that the policy's in place. If not, we need to make the policy.
If we have an agreement, and I think we do, let's bring that back.
There's a policy, as you have a business license.
All right. Hal, anything else?
No.
Tom?
A couple of things. I'll be attending a meeting, uh, this, this Wednesday along with Bruce for the Lodging Association, nine-thirty on Thursday. Uh, also, Claire and I, and I think Neera and Pat are going to Sacramento to meet with the A G's office at 10 o'clock on Friday regarding the airport issue.
And the regional plan update.
And the, uh, uh, meeting next week regarding ambulance J P A. Uh, I also had a suggestion for the council. I, I met, I told you earlier about this new committee, whatever it's gonna be, in, in Placerville. I thought it'd be a good idea, and I talked to one of their city council members, that we meet maybe once a year with Placerville City Council. We say we don't have anything in common, but we all flash back to the Highway Fifty closure years ago, and we communicate and work very closely with Placerville, 'cause the economic impact of them was great. Uh, they also have, uh, some concerns they'd like to share, not concerns, but, uh, information they'd like to share with us on redevelopment. So, perhaps maybe just, once a year, we don't need to do it, you know, six months or every three, be nice to get together. They, they're the only other city in Eldorado County, so I thought it might be nice to do that. Uh, I passed out to the council, as you know, I was back in Honolulu for Pro Bowl, and they had the best year last year, they had second-best year in the history of Honolulu and the islands. Uh, I, I misquoted the A D R. Their average daily hotel rate, uh, rose to 884.79 in November, an 8.2% increase. But what was important, how that translated in, and as I mentioned earlier, in the money for the state of Hawaii and, and for the city and county of Honolulu, tremendous millions of dollars increase just by that amount, increasing their occupancy from 82 to 88%. Huge. So, our business community has a challenge, uh, to help us achieve that and raise that tide so all boats can float higher. Uh, but I did give you, and by the way, their business increase isn't coming from the United States, it's really coming from Canada, uh, Korea, South Korea, and they have now non-stop flights from China and Japan, of course, and Australia and New Zealand. I sat next to a couple from Dublin, Ireland, that were on a six-weeks vacation tour, so, uh, tourism's alive and well in certain other parts of the community. So, that's all.
Okay, and I have, uh, several things to mention quickly. First of all, a letter from our Tahoe Sustainability Commission, and it was written to Liberty Energy, and essentially what they're asking is Liberty, for Liberty Energy to implement a rebate program for alternative net metered systems in the region. Um, I wanted to point that out because I think we're gonna hear more on that on a number of different levels. Also, as, um, Chief Euler knows, that, uh, the State Controller is going to be in town, um, and I think he's there on the 13th, is that correct? Did you hear about this?
I haven't seen it.
Um, yeah, okay, and he's in town to, um, audit the State Aid for Peace Officers Standards and Training Program. So, I thought, thought I'd let you all know that that's gonna happen. I have, have been asked to and would like to, um, join an effort called Mayors for the Freedom to Marry. This is a bipartisan Republican and Democrat mayors who are working to be able to have marriage be something that is a commitment by person and not necessarily by sex. I'd like to be able to, um, support this. I don't know whether I have consensus to do so, or whether we need to bring this back for more discussion, so let me look around and see.
I think the Supreme Court today made a decision.
This Ninth Circuit?
Ninth Circuit, I'm sorry.
Is there any pushback on this?
No.
Good enough, then I... Good enough, then I will be doing so, I also wanted to let you know that our middle school and our high school are amongst those who are going to be included in the 13th Annual Holocaust Arts and Writing Contest sponsored by Chapman University, so just want to let you know that was going on, and I also wanted to point out and to thank the Tahoe Arts League, who seem to be doing quite a wonderful job down at their spot near the senior center, but particularly for some of the fixes that they've made to the building, so that's all I have, okay, seeing nothing else, then I would like to go into closed session, and this is over our Lahontan permit appeal, and we will report after that, hmm? Okay, good enough, all right, meeting's adjourned, oh, if anybody would like to speak to this issue on Lahontan permit, seeing none, we will adjourn.